Twenty-one. Please start by joining me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States
The United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible,
indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Just a quick note of housekeeping. The animal rescue item is off the agenda and to be adjourned are South Hills Commons, Department of Corrections, Stewart's, and Arlington Farms. First, start off with a roll call vote of board members. And Ben?
Ben, you're on mute.
Nope. All right. Here. I see Ben. Nicole?
Here.
Bob?
Here.
Rocco?
Here.
Joan?
Here.
Ahmed? Peter, I believe couldn't make it tonight. Ahmed is planning to substitute. He may join in a few minutes. So right now, we have a board of six. Right, start with tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with Governor's Executive Order 202.1, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted to the town website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call of board members, and there is a quorum present for this meeting. I've also confirmed with the secretary that this meeting has been duly noticed, and we have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice of the meeting on the town's webpage and on the town's bulletin board. We have emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and we have confirmed that the legal notices for the public hearings have been properly published.
Just want to point out quickly for, we have a lot of people on the Zoom, so please keep yourself muted until it is your turn to speak. That will help for all of us, and we'll go from there. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Mike. And we have a long agenda tonight, so for the public comments, we wish that it will be abiding by the three-minute rule for speaking. First up on the agenda is the Vassar Inn and Institute. Tonight, Vassar has been proposing additional mitigation, so we will focus on a secret review of this project. Who's on here for Vassar to give an overview of their revision?
Let's see, President Bradley.
Okay.
Thank you so much. We actually have slides that we would like to show, and they're right here. Thanks so much. There are going to be a couple of us speaking as the experts on each of these slides, but we do not think it'll take too long, and it is, I think, important information. I just want to begin by thanking the planning board for all of the input that you've given us. The last meeting was really helpful to us, and we learned a lot from it, and I think took a lot of the advice. We also have made many, many updates since that time. So if I could just have the first slide, that would be great. So I'm just going to give a couple of overview ideas, and then we'll have updates on exactly what we've changed, which will include the preservation of Williams, the preservation of the lawn, support for the farmer's market, and update on the parking design and enhancement to College Avenue. We also want to address the commitment to sustainability, as that's so important to the town, and then discuss the architectural review, and then I'll just summarize. If I could have the next slide, right? So this is the overview. I just wanted us to remember and think back what the benefits to the town of this proposed project is, are. And we believe this, and even people who have opposed to the project say that, yes, these are the benefits of the institute. It will bring new programming and visitors to the Arlington Center. It creates 150 new construction jobs and 45 new permanent jobs. It increases tax revenue to the town on land that was not previously taxable will be, will create tax revenue. It becomes a unique attraction in the Hudson Valley. And finally, and maybe most important, it fosters collaboration between Vassar and the town with public, shared space walkable to the Arlington Center and open for all to enjoy. The next slide. Just a couple of updates. As the planning board suggested, and as we knew was very important, we have met in-depth with the Arlington Neighborhood Association. We have also met with neighbors who, because not everybody is represented by the Neighborhood Association, we also have met with neighbors on College Avenue to learn how could we mitigate any of the issues that they see. And those discussions with the neighbor, with the town, really have gone on for a couple of years, but have intensified since we were last in with the planning board. And based on the recommendations from the planning board, and from the Arlington Neighborhood Association, and from the College Avenue neighbors, we have made substantial updates to the project, which I believe, and I think all of us believe, truly improve the project and amplify its benefits for the community. So now, I'm going to turn it over to, I believe it's Mary Ann, who is going to start with the first of these five updates, and this is the preservation of the Williams history. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bradley. The State Historic Preservation Office has ruled that the removal of Williams may proceed, subject to a letter of resolution, which stipulates the documentation, reuse, and salvage of building elements. The college has agreed to the LOR, to the letter of resolution, and completed and submitted a full structured documentation package to the state. To further develop ideas for how we might preserve the history of Williams, we have also met with members of the town Historic Preservation Commission and provided them with a tour of the buildings. Their ideas have provided some excellent additional preservation steps that are being explored. We have also commissioned a public artwork that will include artifacts from Williams Hall and will be in the lobby of the new building, have created a 3D scan of the building as a visual history, which is in Vassar's archives and special collections, and we are exploring reuse or repurposing of materials from the buildings, such as wood, slate roofing, and slate stair trends. These materials will be used to create unique millwork pieces, if we can salvage them, in all hopes we can, and landscape elements such as benches. If you could go to the next slide, please. We've also committed to the permanent preservation of the remaining lawn on the site, as shown on this slide here. We recognize, and the town recognizes, the importance of the open lawn space to the community, and recognizing that, the town has asked for assurance that it would be preserved, and the college Board of Trustees has granted the unprecedented permanent preservation of the remaining lawn area on the site, as shown here outlined in the red dashed line. That's approximately nine tenths of an acre, and will easily accommodate the yearly farmer's market, as well as other events that are held there. And Brian will talk next about that farmer's market.
Thanks, Mary Ann. I represent Vassar on the Arlington Business Improvement District, so we know the importance of supporting the events on this area, like the farmer's market. We just want to talk about some of the things in this design, and some of the things that we're doing that actually help support that activity. We have pulled power and water from the building to the south end of the lawn, so that it's available to be used by events and things that would go on in that area to help support those activities. We've agreed to contribute $2,500 a year of Parks and Recreation to promote events and activities that will take place on this lawn. We have improved vehicle access. To the north of the building, along Raymond Avenue, there is an area of the curb that is reduced, which will allow fire trucks and vehicles that associated with the farmer's market or other events that need to get access to the lawn, to jump the curb there and get out to set up for their event and unload things, those things they need to do like that. Initially, we've started conversations with the Business Improvement District about enhancing the signage for the farmer's market. You know, each year, they put up temporary signs, so talking to them about ways in which we can improve that signage to draw more people to the event. We've also started offering some additional promotional support for the farmer's market and for Arlington in general. So we recognize that the bid district board is really a group of volunteers that are trying to do this work while also trying to run their businesses, so don't have an enormous amount of time. So if our professional staff have an ability to offer and help their, support their initiatives, that's something that we are open and interested in doing.
Thank you, Brian. So I'd like to talk next about a redesign of the parking area to the project. Hearing concerns from neighbors about the parking lot design and its proximity to the nearest properties, we've redesigned it in ways that provide a larger buffer to the nearest neighbors, allowing, allow for improved stormwater management, and the introduction of additional green infrastructure practices, and make for a more logical entrance from College Avenue. As shown in the circle in the revised plan, which is on the right in this image, there's approximately an additional 40 feet of green space between the property to the west and the parking area. This additional space allows us to introduce a landscaped bioretention zone in that area, and permeable paving as well in the parking lot itself. The other major change to the parking lot design was to move the entrance road from the location that's shown in the left image, where would align with the current entrance to Alumni House, further to the east. In this new location, it is across College Avenue from Dean's Lane, and makes for a much more logical intersection with College Avenue at that site. On the next slide, you can see a rendering of the redesigned parking lot. This would be the view as you walk down the sidewalk on College Avenue, approaching from the west, so you're heading towards the Raymond College, the Raymond Avenue, College Avenue Roundabout, and you're standing on the sidewalk on the south side of College Avenue, and looking across the street there towards the new parking area. And as you can see, you can see a lot of trees and plantings that have been introduced. You can see the parking lot and cars through the trees, if you look closely. The inn is in the distance on the right, and Alumni House is at the top of the hill. This image is to demonstrate what growth will look like about five to seven years after planting. So the trees are being introduced at, along the streetscape, in rather large species, so approximately four calipar trees will be introduced along the road here, making for a nice block, and then growing to this, look like this over five to seven years. Speaking of College Avenue, I'd like to turn it over now to Henry Thomas from LRC Engineers, who will talk about improvements to College Avenue. These improvements, I should say, are not needed as part of this project, but were developed in response to concerns expressed by neighbors about the rate of speed at which vehicles travel down this stretch of road. So with that, Henry?
Thank you, Mary Ann.
You're welcome.
I agree with Mary Ann that these are complementary items to the institute and inn, and really, as she said, are in response to maybe the most substantial comment we heard, which is about existing travel speeds on the road. So we've proposed a number of traffic calming improvements to the streetscape. And traffic calming in a very general nature is the implementation of design elements that increase the driver's attention, reduce conflicts between pedestrians and cars, and clarify where cars should be and where people should be, to provide everybody a lot more confidence about the road functioning and performing as it should. It's important to note that any of these measures that I'll highlight on here do not preclude or restrict use of the road in any way from end to end, so we're not talking about anything that redirects movements, just simply that it facilitates an increased level of attention. Starting at the right-hand side of the image there toward Raymond Avenue, we're proposing in the dark green box, an extension of the center median island that runs into the roundabout on Raymond Avenue. And that eight-foot curved island would contain landscaping, including trees and shrubs, perennials, and ornamental grasses, to provide an enhanced landscape image, but as well to provide some definition to the travel lane and the delineated parking that will be on the north side of the street. That island will run to just short of the entrance to the Inn and Institute in Dean's Lane. And then beyond that, there is a shorter island in the light green, which we're calling a minor island. It is also eight feet wide, but it will be more modest in length to make sure that turning movements into existing driveways are maintained. That will also contain a crosswalk through the island as a means of refuge to get pedestrians from one side of the street to the other. Transitioning from there, in blue, you see what we're describing as a standard street section, and that is an area where we have two travel lanes. We continue to have the two parallel parking on both sides of the street. And the intent there is that the street itself is not modified in any way other than the clarification of the travel lanes with new center striping and a new lane line to basically articulate where that drive lane is and keep drivers paying attention to that lane itself. The purple box about mid-block is where we are proposing a mid-block crossing, and that would be a raised pedestrian crosswalk on top of a speed hump or a speed table, if you will. And that's a very gentle thing to the vehicles, but it's enough that it requires sign warning, and it requires drivers to pay attention to it. In addition to the vertical change, the island or the curb line will also come out from the far edges of the street toward the drive lane to neck down that road a little bit, still maintaining the same travel width, but just necking down the curb to, again, increase the attention that has to get put on that crossing. Following that, going west, we have another long length of road that is, again, the same configuration as the road is today, but with the enhancements for the center line striping and edge lane striping. And lastly, at the intersection of Park Avenue and College Ave, we're proposing that that become a three-way stop intersection, so that vehicles on College Ave in either a westerly or easterly direction would be stopping at that intersection. That'll help mitigate the ability to drive many blocks without slowing down, and that intersection is reinforced by curb bumpouts on the corners of Park, and a slight reduction in the width of the overall roadway with curbing through the intersection. Again, simply to force a little more attention as you pass through that intersection. Supplementing all of this would be a proposed introduction of supplemental sight lighting, that is, adding street lights on existing utility poles where they don't already exist. So almost filling in every other gap between the existing lights with the goal of providing a more continuous level of lighting throughout. Back to you, Mary Ann.
Just want to say thanks, Henry. Should help calm it on my way over here. I was on College Ave and tailgated by someone who passed around me and sped off down the road at at least 50 miles an hour, so.
Wow.
This should, this should help.
Before we move on, I just thought it'd be important to note that we're proposing these changes as part of the project that we would pay for, and then the medians that are getting implemented, Vassar would maintain.
All right, thanks, Brian. Continue.
Thank you, Henry, and thank you for that addition, Brian. So I'd like to say a few things about the commitment to sustainability that this project reflects and represents. As we all know, Vassar and the town share a commitment to sustainability. And you might wonder, how is that reflected in this building? Well, for one thing, it is going to burn no fossil fuels, and therefore will be a carbon-neutral building, purely electrically driven. And our purchased electricity from, that the college purchases, is purely renewable. How do we achieve an electric facility? Well, we're using geothermal wells to heat and cool the building. We have solar thermal on the roof to help heat hot water, and we have solar voltaics to produce renewable electricity. In addition, the building has many daylight spaces and LED energy-efficient lighting. All of these approaches help reduce, actually, your consumption of electricity, too. Materials that are used in the building will be, and in the landscape, will be locally sourced and natural to the extent possible. As I mentioned previously, in the areas to the, to the west of the project, we've introduced stormwater infiltration basins, and have those also located to the east of the institute as well, this, or to the inn, sorry, as well. This reduces pollutant runoff and allows us to treat rainwater runoff before it enters local water supplies. The landscaping and vegetation that we're introducing support pollinating insects, and also support stormwater uptake, and to the degree possible, are represented by native species. In support of this project, we've been recognized by New York State and have been awarded a $1 million grant from NYSERDA. This grant will help us to pay for some of these, the delta that some of these green and sustainable design features require. But probably most importantly for this conversation, this grant will also allow us to undertake outreach and mentorship programs for local K through 12 students who are interested in green jobs. And those programs are actually starting this summer. In addition, we will be undertaking training for the adoption of clean energy by local homeowners and small businesses, and those training sessions will actually take place in the building itself, so we can demonstrate both as the building is being constructed, but then also as it's in operation, what a facility like this allows one to do, and how you can actually undertake these efforts yourself. And I think at that point, I'm turning it over to Brian to talk through some architectural features of the project.
Thanks, Mary Ann. As we prepare, began the design process for this project, we looked at the code, working with our architect, and thought it'd be worthwhile just pointing out the key areas that we focused on as we thought about architecture in relation to this project. So we put them here and just quickly hit on them, you know, 21052, or 21053B2, focusing on new construction being consistent with the architectural style of the district. So this is in the institutional district, which in this area, the town is made up of Vassar buildings. So the project is influenced by Vassar's architectural history. And being that this is proposed in the institutional district, just worth noting what is permitted to be built on this site. Things like dormitories and classrooms, you know, things of institutional scale and shape and design, and that's kind of important context as we were thinking about this project. Code does ask us to look beyond just the district, which you'll see we've done as we, as I go through this. 210152A4A, compatible building forms, so I'll show you how some of the building forms of the community are reflected in this project. And 210152A4C, windows, roof lines, doors, and aspects of the project be compatible with the existing historical character. And again, I'll show you how these are reflected in the building and reflects the character of the area. And finally, 210152A, noting that the designer is free to exercise creativity, so that things don't look exactly like the items that you see in the community, but reflect them and have a creative license associated with them. So as we think about the character of the community, I thought it'd be important to evaluate what surrounds the project. And so we drew radius about a quarter, radius a quarter mile around the proposed site, and you can see that almost two-thirds of the property in that circle is Vassar-owned and institutionally zoned. So it just shows the importance of the Vassar architecture in influencing the community character of this project. And then about 20% of that property in this circle is commercial and multifamily, and then the other roughly 20% is non-Vassar residential. So just quickly, looking at the community character, you can really see the diversity of the buildings. Just looking here, you can see different sizes, shapes, colors, materials. There's institutional buildings, there's residential buildings, there's commercial buildings, there's large-scale multifamily. So there's really no consistent architectural style or theme as you look through this area. And that kind of informed how we took from the character of the community and embedded it in this project. And then, again, recognizing that roughly two-thirds of that property in that circle we drew is made up of Vassar property, the history and architecture of the Vassar campus makes an important community character reference. And so, again, like the surrounding area, you can see the diversity of the architecture on campus. Again, different shapes, sizes, materials, colors, all represented here in Vassar. So again, not a consistent architectural theme represented. So we start focusing on the specific aspects of this project, starting with the institute, which is at the north end of the project and facing the Arlington Business District. You can see the two-story flat roof, which is also reflected in the business district as well as on campus. And you can see, you know, there are two-story buildings, so that that's kind of in scale with what you've seen there represented within this area and the community. So the building form kind of reflects the community. And then looking at the inn, which is at the southern end closer to the residences, you can see the peaked roof and the peaked dormers that are reflected in those residences and those houses that are nearby, as well as Alumni House. And if you look just below the top floor of, or top, top set of windows, you can see that row of brick, which is designed in to mimic and reflect that row of timbering below the windows on Alumni House to connect with the Alumni House as well. And then in the windows, in the top floor, if you look at the far-right window in the inn, you can see that mullions and the crosshatch there in that window, which also reflects the windows on the first floor of Alumni House, where you can see, again, the mullions and the crosshatch there, reflected in the building. And these are some of the changes that we've made in the project over time to better reflect the community character of this building, or of this area. Continuing on to materials, brick, you can see it reflected in the end portis of the building here. As you look around the community, you can see brick represented in a number of places, whether it's in the institutional buildings like Main Building you see here, the Arthur S. May School down the street, or the Juliet Building, and the post office here as well. Brick is a material represented in the community and part of the community character. Continuing on to glass, glass is also prevalent in this area. As you walk along Raymond, you can see it in the bridge building, or the library, the two bottom right side pictures, both visible from Raymond Avenue, in the retail buildings, again, along Raymond Avenue, the Bank of America Building, continuing along Raymond Avenue, and this county building just around the block. You see, as you look at the way the glass is represented in each of these buildings, it's represented in different ways in each of these places, which is consistent with the code, which allows the designer to have their creativity to flow forward, which prevents it in different ways, as is also represented in our project. Continuing on to color, you can see dark color represented in some of the buildings nearby in these houses here. And if you look on the bottom left, you can see a light-colored house in dark color, and the light-colored one draws your attention first, it kind of sticks out, whereas the dark color recedes into the landscape there. And that's what we're trying to achieve with this project with the color selection, to allow it to recede in the landscape, so it doesn't stand out quite so much as a lighter colored would. So just summarizing here, we've kind of shown that there really is no consistent theme for the architecture in this area. So the project as proposed reflects the character and some of the pieces in the forms, materials, the roof lines, in the project as the code prescribes to bring in the community character into the project. And these forms and characteristics from the community are brought in with the creativity of the architect, again, as the code allows. I'm going to turn it back to President Bradley to wrap up.
Not Zoom unless you forget to unmute. Thank you very, very much to the planning board for listening to all of this, and thanks, Brian, Henry, and Mary Ann for helping out. So just to summarize, Vassar has made substantial positive updates to benefit the town and the community and respond to what we've heard. These include five, you know, really sizable changes. Preserving the lawn in perpetuity, which really has never happened at Vassar before. Board has never agreed to do that, and we didn't think they were, you know, we weren't sure what was going to happen, but they agreed. Support for the farmer's market in every way we can, publicity, et cetera. Enhancement to the College Avenue area, because when we met with neighbors, there were a lot of complaints about the traffic there. We really hired LRC, worked hard to make that a much better place, a much, you know, easier, less-traffic speeding. Updating the parking for improved buffer for neighbors, again, in response to what we had heard were concerns. And really taking a lot of additional steps to preserve the history of Williams Hall, as we have talked about its historical significance. as we have talked about its historical significance. In the end, the institute, I think demonstrates compatible building forms with the indigenous district, community and neighborhood buildings that are already here where it's located. And the windows, roof lines, doors, et cetera, are compatible with the existing and historic nature and character of the area around. So based on all of this, we're here to respectfully ask the board to issue a negative declaration. Thank you so much.
I'll go to first to Eric for department's recommendation.
Okay. You have the staff's recommendation and comments. We reviewed the history of the project since the application first was presented to the board in 2019. The board's environmental review, which last year focused on four areas of concern. There's new information that Vassar has provided on, on each of those. And they are in your packets for your consideration. If you choose to act, there is a draft negative declaration for you to consider. There, we are also recommending that the board regardless, consider the text amendment that is proposed because a separate recommendation is required as referred, as the zoning was referred to the planning board. There needs at some point there after seeker review, there needs to be a recommendation back to the town board on that proposed zoning. To that end, there is a revised zoning text in your packets because in discussion with the board and consideration of it, we determined it might have, the original draft might have some undesirable effects, both for the project and for the town. And so we came up with something else in consultation with staff, board members, and and others in the, in the town hall. So those are the recommendations for your consideration.
All right. Thanks. Let me hit up Andy first here today. Any remaining engineering issues, SWIP, et cetera?
Yeah, there's a few minor technical details that need to be resolved, mainly related to the SWIP, which was revised as a result of the new layout. But in general, the, the new layout seems to be a positive change in terms of traffic, traffic circulation as well as stormwater. So none of the, none of the comments that we have would be any kind of major stumbling block for them to, to be resolved.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Is Mark on for a traffic review?
Yes.
Any final comments?
Yes, hello. Mark Paturo, representing the town. I did look over the traffic aspect of the application. The parking plan has been modified based on the modified design of the parking and layout on the site. Overall, the parking follows what was previously proposed, and we have no specific comments related to that. It accommodates the different parking scenarios. We had some comments as it relates to updating some of the site distances and, and enhancing or reviewing and making sure that the site distances are not impeded by the landscaping within the new medians along College Avenue. The rest of our comments are pretty technical and, and could be easily addressed by the applicant related to the improvements that they're proposing along College Avenue related to signage, also some markings as well. But those are really technical in nature.
Okay, I think you confirmed that the, the additional parking on the street on College Avenue that they're proposing was not included in the parking management plan, so that would be excess?
Yes, that is correct. So the parking that's on College Avenue that's proposed, that is not part of the parking management plan as part of the project.
All right, thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
Well, this is on for public hearing tonight, so I, first I want to note, I think we've joined by another board member. Ahmed, are you out there?
Perhaps he's muted, but I saw him on the
I saw his name pop up.
List, yeah. Let's see.
I am here.
Okay, great. So we do have a full board of seven members now. I just wanted to note that before we begin. Thanks. Now I'll move that we open this site plan public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right?
We have a few raised hands already, so maybe we'll start with those.
Start out with that. You can always unmute your phone with a star six if you're on the phone.
And again, we'll try to keep your comments to three minutes, right?
Yep, there'll be a timer going off, and I'll let you know.
All right, so the first person with a raised hand is I McDonald. I don't know who that is, but please give us your name too.
Ian McDonald. I'm an attorney with Mackey, Butts &amp; Wise, and I represent the Arlington Neighborhood Arlington Neighborhood Association has submitted some additional material since the last meeting. I would encourage the board to review that prior to making a determination as part of seeker. Also, my firm submitted a letter dated June 18th of last year. I would encourage the board to review that again prior to making its determination. I would just like to point out a couple of things. I said that this at the last board meeting that I attended, that the board has before it two actions under seeker. One is the text amendment to the zoning code, and the other is site plan for this project. With respect to the text amendment to the zoning code, the board is required to review the environmental impact, not just to this property, but all property that would be impacted by the amendment in the institutional zoning district. I have not seen that the board has done that. I have not seen that the applicant has submitted anything, any information with respect to the environmental impact on other properties in the institutional zoning district. The other thing to, to consider or to reiterate is that, you know, this project is going to involve significant amount or significant reduction in open space. That is contrary to the, the town comprehensive plan. And the last point I'd want to make is with respect to alternate sites, haven't heard a lot of discussion about that. There certainly is in the 800 acre campus, other possible sites to locate this hotel. And other sites that are not adjacent to a residential district, other sites that are not, or would not involve the demolition of historical structures, other sites that would not involve the reduction in open space or is greater reduction in open space. Open space, by the way, that is used by the public. This is arguably a public park. And for those reasons, I think the board needs to issue a positive declaration, and there should be a environmental impact statement. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ian. Next is Robert Legacy.
Good evening. My name is Bob Legacy, and I'm director of the Arlington Business Improvement District. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of our board of directors, who has consistently spoken in favor of liberal arts institute and. The college is during this process of in constant communication with our board of directors and updating us constantly throughout this process. This project ties into many of the projects that are going on into Arlington for the future success of our business district. Especially during the construction period, there are going to be many jobs created which will bring extra foot traffic into the business district for coffee, breakfast and lunch. As we return to some normalities from the pandemic, the opportunity for new people visiting our businesses is very important for the district's future and sustainability. Once construction is completed, there will be 45 jobs added to the local economy, local economy with most filled by local residents. The NLLR Institute will bring people from all over the country and world into the Arlington area. Past years, over 20,000 mission visitors have come to Vassar College to visit. Most of these visitors have had to find other locations to stay outside of Arlington. If the NLLR Institute is built, many of these visitors will stay in this, will stay in the area, spending money in the business district. Another major benefit for the town and Arlington School District is the building will go on the tax rolls. The NLLR Institute, if approved, allows for major conferences on issues and topics that affect our local community to take place. The inn will allow for outer towners who attend these events to stay on site. During free time, any of these people may wander to the business district where they can dine or shop. It's possible many of these visitors who attend the conferences stay at the inn may return sometime in the area to enjoy the many attractions that this area offers. Since the president's presentation to the planning board, there have been changes made to address the issues concerning the local neighbors. The parking lot has been redesigned to move it further from the neighboring residents and to allow for more landscaping and to help offer the neighbors as well. The concern of traffic moving too fast on College Avenue is addressed by the college for, by adding a medium with landscaping to help mediate the problem. A plan to add extra crosswalks nearing the street will assist also in slowing the traffic. The building itself has had many changes to help better match out the community. Carbon-free footprint will serve as a model for other businesses and community members to assess the benefit of green technology. Vassar College will partner with the New York State Energy Research and Development Authorities to share learnings from this carbon-neutral building. The Vassar Alumni Lawn is a great community space. The lawn hosts the Arlington Farmer's Market, Family Yoga and other special events. The college is committed to improving the mating lawn by fixing graying issues. They have agreed to annual contribution of the town Poughkeepsie Recreation Department to promote events on the lawn. The lawn can be a great place for college students and local community members to come together for events. NLLR Institute complements the Main Street redevelopment initiative and Arthur May School project. This project attails the long-term vision of the Arlington Business Improvement District to continue on our path to revitalization. In conclusion, the Arlington Business Improvement District Board of Directors encourages the town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board to move this project forward. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments, Bob. Next?
Next with a hand raised is Micah Kenfield.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I'm Micah Kenfield with Vassar College, and I'll be brief. Just two things I wanted to note. First and foremost, as the individual that'll be taking point on much of this grant from NYSERDA that Dean Begamon referenced, I'm really excited for the opportunities we're going to have to promote educational learning opportunities for K to 12 students in the area, starting this summer and continuing on an ongoing basis, not just using the institute as a single building in our community, but rather as a springboard to really, you know, spark innovation throughout the region and educate students, keep them in the area as opposed to moving out. And even after that, being able to also use the building to work with local homeowners and small businesses to really, you know, connect them with these technologies and make a meaningful difference. I, I'm really excited for that. I also just very briefly wanted to address a comment that was just had about the lawn area and its role. Something I think is really impressive about what Vassar's doing here is through being willing to sign that covenant with the town, it would make the space capable of functioning as that public open space that's been asked. I just want to quote from the planning packet, but this is from the town. It should be noted that absent this agreement and independent of the proposed development, because it is private property, Vassar would be free to preclose the use. I just wanted to echo that or I wanted to repeat that because I don't see this as it's open space now. If anything, this is the partnership that Vassar's able to have with the town to ensure that the majority of the lawn is able to continue to be used as open space moving forward. I just thought that factual and accuracy should be touched on. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next with a hand raised is Julie Zabo.
Hi, my name is Julie Zabo, and I'm one of the court, oops. I'm one of the coordinators of the Arlington Neighborhood Association, and I just want to make four points. One is that the best way to preserve the history of Williams is to preserve the building, not to, to create a digital archive or save a few stones. The building itself is the best way, preserving the building is the best way to preserve the history. The second is that despite all the sort of propaganda about how green this project is, the greenest building is the one that's already built. And Vassar's, Vassar's reports don't really take into account the carbon footprint of taking the building down and all the carbon that, sequestered carbon in the timber in the building, and then also the process of moving that out as well as the construction. So when you weigh that, it's, this is never, they're actually, it's not just a purely green project. Repurposing the old building would be a true, and introducing some environmentally friendly aspects to it would make it a truly green project. The last thing is that the character of the community, they're talking about the character of the community, but the character of the community is best preserved, would be best preserved by locating the I and I into the commercial, commercial part in that circle of the community, not into the residential area of the community. Lastly, when Brian Swarthout talks about some of the diverse aesthetics that you find in the, in the neighborhood, a lot of those are due to very poor decisions that have been made in the past, poor planning decisions. And as we wrote in the historic application, the very unique thing about Williams and where it's located is that it's sort of, that block hasn't changed since the 1920s. And it's unique in that aspect. And putting a modern building, it's not going to, it's a similar mistake to other mistakes that have been made in the neighborhood. The last thing is that although I laud Vassar's attempt to improve this project and negotiate with the community, so far, this negotiation has only really involved one meeting with the ANA. And I wish that Vassar would really draw more upon the ANA and other members of the community in terms of creating ideas for this project and what, where it could really go. Okay, so thank you. I really urge a positive, a vote for a positive declaration. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Julie. Next?
Next with a hand raised, Denise Whalen.
Denise Whalen, I, I live at Edel Silver Mine in Poughkeepsie, and I'm also a faculty member at the college. Just a few points. I, I, like many people, would lament the destruction of the central defining open green space if the, in an institute were built where it's currently sited. I am also probably even more concerned about the increase of noise, light pollution and traffic that would, that would adhere to this kind of project at this location. Vassar's, of course, had an inn and a restaurant in the Alumni House. And over time, they converted that to mostly office space. It would be disappointing to see, you know, a, a second inn built that then might not be financially viable or be then put to some other use by the college. And I guess I'd just point out that all the benefits, and they are, they are wonderful benefits, all the many benefits that President Bradley and Dean Begamon and Brian Swarthout mentioned, those are incredible benefits and, and supported by Robert Legacy of the Business District. But those would all remain intact if this building were sited at a different location. I think it's an incredible project. I just wish it were not sited at this location. And I too encourage the board for a positive declaration. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Denise.
Next is Matad Alawala.
Hi, my name is Muhad Alawala. I'm a student body representative at Vassar. I was elected by hundreds of students because I was elected by hundreds of students because Vassar administrators are notoriously selfish. They deal in bad faith with their own employees, students, and faculty. The town of Poughkeepsie would be foolish to accept Vassar's plans because they make no effort to solve issues that have been contested for the last several months. With a thousand-acre campus, Vassar has no shortage of solutions. Across the street is just as close to the business district. Colleges are tax-exempt because they contribute positively to their communities. If Vassar won't contribute tax and it's disrupting the lives of Poughkeepsie residents, what right does it have to ask for changes to the town codes to be made? Vassar administrators are bound to be selfish. They don't care about K-12 education in the city, but the town of Poughkeepsie, elected representatives of the people must have the interests of the people of Poughkeepsie at heart. Thank you.
Okay, next with a raised hand is Neil. That's all I've got, the one name. Neil?
Hi, sir. Sorry, it took me a second to start my video. Can you see me? There we go. I want to thank the town, the planning board for allowing me to speak. I wish to echo the support of the In-N-Out Institute project at a different location. I think it's a wonderful project for Vassar, for the town. All the benefits will obtain if it's put across the street. I would simply like to point out as well that all of the efforts that Vassar College has made to mitigate the effects of the project on our residential neighborhood, in fact, admit of the very real negative impact that it will have on our residential neighborhood. Increased noise, increased pollution, increased traffic, loss of green space, bringing people in who otherwise wouldn't be here or staying overnight, coming and going at all hours of the night, and those are precisely the kinds of issues that the environmental planning law suggests that the town board must look at when choosing a positive declaration for an environmental impact review. So as one of the neighbors who is affected, I would also like to point out that if you move Vassar's quarter-mile radius just a little ways, you get many people along College and Fulton Avenue who are here for the residential quality of life, which we believe the hotel project will very much negatively impact. I support the In-N-Out Institute, but not at the expense of a residential quality of life. It is true that Vassar College met with us, but what they didn't tell you is that the neighbors almost uniformly oppose the project in its present location. Of course, it's marginally slightly less offensive to our neighborhood than it was in its original conception, but the main takeaway is the neighbors don't want it where they're proposing to put it. We do support it in a different location. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks, Neil. Okay, next is Larry Trippell.
Thank you for letting me speak, and I just have to point out that I, I just find it baffling that, given the alternative location, what the advantage is to have it at this location that Vassar is pressing for. One of the things that I don't see mentioned is that, let's assume that most of the people staying at the hotel are there to do, to be on the Vassar campus, and that means they're going to have to cross Raymond Avenue constantly, back and forth, going between the campus and the hotel. So in the other location, they would already be on campus. Everybody knows how bad the traffic on Raymond Avenue can be, and it's just going to make it much worse or dangerous. Why should they even have to cross Raymond Avenue to get out to the campus? There in the other location, they're also closer to the restaurants and other shops on College View, and College View is not nearly as crowded as Raymond Avenue in terms of traffic. So it's totally, like, it's totally baffling why that is not, why you haven't picked a better location, which is a little bit of dead space there anyway. And, you know, the other point I have to make is that tearing down the building and putting a 3D imitation of it in, in the new building just seems unnecessary when you've got a fantastic old building that can be preserved. The, the beauty of Vassar in general is primarily because of the building, the old buildings that are on it, and I see no reason why this shouldn't be preserved. Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Larry. Next with a raised hand is Stephanie.
Hello?
Yep, I hear you.
Oh, okay. This is Stephanie, and I live on College Avenue. I know there's a couple of our neighbors that we are positive towards what they are doing, and we've had a few meetings to voice our concerns about traffic and the look of the building and the landscaping in front of the building, and I feel like it's going to up the value of our houses on College Avenue because I think the two buildings that are there now that they're going to be taking down are just an eyesore. I don't think they're part of the beautiful other buildings that are on Vassar campus. These are the two that just look abandoned and decrepit, so I'd be happy to see them go. And I'm also excited about a new restaurant to walk to. I think it could bring better businesses to Raymond Avenue because the businesses that are on Raymond Avenue, besides the coffee shop and a few little things, you know, they're not so great, and there are a lot of vacancies. It'll also bring, I think, some jobs for teens, hopefully local teens. I mean, I have kids, and I'm sure there's other people on their street, their kids can just hopefully work at the restaurant, work at the hotel, and I'm glad there'll still be a farmer's market, there'll still be a lawn. I think it'll just make our street look so much better. I'm not that concerned about the traffic. Fifty rooms is not a lot of rooms. So I'm for it.
All right, thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Okay, next with a raised hand is Luke Hunsberger.
Well, I would like to echo a lot of things that Neil said, and in addition, offer some other things. First of all, everything that Vassar presented is fine, you know, the jobs, the grant for education, carbon neutrality, median alone, College Ave., and all that stuff, and a paltry $2,500 a year for the town green. The, the problem is the location of the project. The project requires destroying the three Williams buildings and the adjacent building, and the reason that they look like eyesores is because Vassar has refused to maintain them. If they were properly maintained, that would not be the case. The green space, they say it's preserving sixty, seventy percent of the green space. That's, well, it's just not true. Basically, the only part of the green space that's going to be usable is the part that's to the north of the restaurant, and that would be about fifty percent. And, you know, so ruining the open green space, it's just not the same as having a wide-open green space if you've got a restaurant and conference center and hotel sitting at the end. I don't think the people are going to be picnicking in front of the restaurant and conference center. Now, location is the main problem because those are the big problems, the big environmental impacts, the loss of green space and the loss of the historic buildings. And the crazy thing is the location of the project could be moved along College View Avenue, and Vassar made some arguments against this, you know, I've been talking about this for three years. They talked about, oh, we don't want to make curb cuts in College View Ave., we don't want to move any of the tennis courts, and the, the inn would be too close to the students, even though it would be close to children in the neighborhood across the street. All these arguments go away because they're talking about developing a building in that location on College View Avenue for the development office and admissions office. So that area is going to be developed, and what better way to integrate the In-N-Out Institute with the campus than putting it near the admissions office and the other building? So, you know, we've been talking about this for three years, but they still don't consider that, even though they don't give any arguments that really mean anything, it's just convenient arguments. So if you put it in a different location, preserve a hundred percent of the green space, preserve the historic Williams building, preserve the small-scale feel of the neighborhood, you would not have the traffic and noise increase along College Ave. And so I oppose this and urge the planning board to issue a positive declaration. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Luke. Next, yeah, is Elena Collins.
Yes, hello. Can, can I be heard? Am I being heard?
Yes. We can hear you.
Okay, great. I've heard a lot of people talk about the environmental impact of this project, but, and forgive me if this has already been addressed at previous meetings, I'm wondering whether an environmental impact study has been done to date. If it hasn't, I would urge the town board to, to request such a study be done so that these kinds of questions can be addressed and hopefully answered before any type of development takes place. So that's my main point to make tonight. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Elena. Next is Zlatnik.
Hi, I'm Student Zlatnik. I'm a faculty member at Vassar, and I actually live at 162 College Avenue, which is pretty much as close to the inn as anyone is going to get. I opened up my front door, and there's the Alumni House parking lot right now, and I have no problem with the, in the institute, just as other faculty members and, and members of the college have said. It's a great project, it just shouldn't be built, built in a, built in a residential neighborhood. And I'm pretty confident that it's not going to improve the neighborhood because already my husband and I have conversations, and they make me sick to my, hot, sick to my stomach when we have them, that we're not sure we're going to be able to stay here, that we're going to have to sell our house back to the college, and who's going to want to buy our house once there's a giant Hyatt across the street? Sorry, Brian, I actually don't think it's a particularly beautiful building. I think it's actually kind of an ugly, kind of generic-looking building. No one's going to want to buy this house. It's going to be another empty house on College Avenue, of which there are many empty college houses on College Avenue. I just don't see how it's going to improve the neighborhood. I think it's going to kill the neighborhood. So again, I think it's a great project, and it would be a great project if it was built along Raymond Avenue, where it would be closer to the business district. And, I don't know, we've been talking about this for years now, but that's all I have to say.
All right. Next is Katerina.
Hi, my name's Katerina. I graduated from Vassar last year, so I'm speaking as an alumna and somebody who dearly loves the town of Poughkeepsie. I've been following this project for over a year, and I continue to be disappointed by what I find to be a disingenuous approach from Vassar and frankly, the brazen impunity with which it has acted. While it continues to present itself as a benevolent force of environmentalism and community, it's actually, to me, doesn't seem interested in advancing anything other than its own financial interests, and, you know, this, an electric steamroller is still a steamroller, so I really, I mean, I urge the board to look more closely at kind of the greenwashing efforts that were presented today and the negative impacts of this specific location for the project. Like Matad and many other people who know Vassar from the inside, I think there's ample evidence to suggest that administrators have little incentive to care about what the larger community thinks about this project or to act in the best interest of the people of Poughkeepsie. That's just my personal two cents. And then lastly, I want to read a brief statement from Dr. Nicholas Adams with his permission. He says, "I am a historian of architecture and planning. I taught at Vassar for almost thirty years and am now retired. I know the Arlington area well and lived previously on Hooker Avenue, Poughkeepsie. I long use the Arlington area as a laboratory for my students. The area that Vassar wishes to redevelop is a key piece of residential community. It is linked along College Avenue to Poughkeepsie, and the site Vassar wishes to develop is the head of the community. It sets the tone for College Avenue. The architecture that has been placed there, Williams, Alumni House, the successive houses, is low-key modest and unostentatious. It attracts a sporadic use rather than continual going and coming. It is consistent with the residential zone. Vassar's proposal will violate the natural character of the area, no matter how the building is disguised. It will be the site of regular deliveries, of meetings and dinners, of regular and insistent comings and goings. It belongs to the shopping streets beyond College View on Raymond Avenue, not within the area of College Avenue, where it will have only a deleterious effect. It will not improve the residential character. We need some clarity here. It is with difficulty that we sustain our boundaries. Farmlands are eaten up to make commercial developments. High-street areas are undermined by shopping malls. Residential areas are altered by variances for one business or another. Here you have a wonderful late nineteenth-century slash early twentieth-century residential area. Let's preserve it and strengthen it. Please do not diminish its value by allowing commerce to undercut its character. Thank you for your support, consideration, and shared concern." That was his note, and I ask the board to please issue a positive declaration.
All right, thanks. There's no one else with a raised hand currently. I'll check the chat as well. If you wanted to speak, you can also just unmute yourself, and we'll try to take them as they come, but I do have a hand raised now by Eve Danbrough. Eve?
Can you hear me? Am I?
Yes.
My video isn't on, though.
We can hear you.
Okay, it's fine. I'm a professor of art history at Vassar College, and I'd like to consider the historic buildings. They have not been maintained, but the Williams House and related building were designed by noted architects of their day, and they do hold the rustic and create the streetscape, excuse me, streetscape at that end of College and Raymond Avenue. Besides the history of women, rooms of their own, the first homes of women professors treated as professionals, this is an extremely important part of Vassar history that I wish the college would respect. Across the street, as my former colleague Nicholas Adams just stated, there are houses of true variety of different styles, some of them actually designed by women architects related, working, or graduated from the college. The streetscape as we have it is green, it's low, it's residential. Many of the buildings, rather nondescript, commercial, flat roof that were shown in the beginning, are not exactly seen in that immediate environment. There are a few blocks up. Some of the Vassar modernist buildings are not visible from the street. So the new buildings, the Inn and Institute are of a larger scale and density, and I think they work very much against the aesthetic character of the green sward and the streetscape, and they change that residential nature of the, of the area, as various people have said. We have a brick-boxy building, the minimal moldings that Brian Swarthout said. I don't think, you don't have to be an art historian, architectural historian, I think they minimally evoke Alumni House on the hill. That Inn looks more like a motel on Route Nine or out on Route Forty-four. It is a graceless and nondescript building, in my opinion. The Institute also looks like a glass box, more at home at an office park in various suburban or exurban areas. I see this as diminishing the quality of life, as Susan Zlatnik, my colleague, said, as diminishing the values and of houses in those in the area. So I please urge the planning board for a positive declaration for the historic, environmental, and aesthetic qualities for those who live there. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Eve. Anyone else? Yep, next, Jonathan Gordon.
Hi, thank you. I appreciate the time and attention the planning board has been giving to this proposal, not just today, but for the past three years, it feels like. I, I'm not sure. It's been dragging on for a very long time, and that's not just because of opposition from the community, but certainly that's a part of it, right? My feeling is that Vassar is benefiting from the long timeline of this, and they're counting on it. They're trying to wear down the community, they're trying to wear down the planning board, right? Bit by bit, they make tiny concessions, changing the dormers, adding a line of brick, you know, not substantially changing the proposal, but trying to appease. And I think what you've heard today, including beautiful statements by Katerina and what she read from Nick Adams, is that the opposition to this project hasn't substantially altered. The imp- The impacts that people were concerned about when this was first proposed are still largely the impacts that we're concerned about today. They're still the things that bother me. I'm upset, deeply upset every time I walk by it, to think about the demolition of Williams, to think about seeing a hotel in this location. It's enough that I actively avoid this area. I don't like to go by it anymore. I know that I've heard from talking to other people, former residents of Williams, alumni, professors, members of the community, that they feel the same way, that College Avenue is being taken away from them. I know property ownership is on Vassar's side. It is their land. It is institutionally zoned, even though it's the very far edge of that institutional zone. It doesn't feel like a part of campus. It feels like a part of the residential neighborhood. But I think what we've heard from people, what we've been saying, is that, you know, this doesn't feel like an appropriate place for development. And none of the changes that have happened have made me feel indifferently about that. And I think a lot of other people feel the same way. So I hope the board doesn't feel worn down. I hope that they still will press for the positive declaration that they seemed on the verge of doing the last time it was proposed, right? I hope that they'll vote for that. And I thank you regardless of what happens, just for not rubber-stamping this, for giving it a lot of consideration, for pushing back against the development to try to make it something better for the community. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Anyone else? I do not have any hands raised at the moment.
I'm trying to raise my manual hand.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. Manual is fine. Yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I just want to get a bunch of facts clear because there have been some misstatements tonight. So the Arlington Neighborhood Association is now 350 people. 340 of them have submitted written testimony to the town of Poughkeepsie, to the various agencies that have been involved against this location. 165 of them are households in the Arlington residential neighborhood. And 250 of them, 200 of them are people who live or work in Arlington, and 266 live or work in Poughkeepsie. And that doesn't even count the 100 people in the Greater Duchess County region and beyond. We have offered to meet with Vassar College as a community for close to a year and a half. And the first time that happened was a few weeks ago for one hour. So there have been no deep negotiations. Many of us have been asked to meet separately and privately with Vassar College to try to appease our particular concerns. And in the case of the NNA, we were always advocating for a public meeting. All virtues of the Inn and Institute, which we wholeheartedly support and believe will bring lots of good to the community, can be met at another location. The lawn will not be preserved for perpetuity. It will be destroyed for perpetuity. One acre will remain, slightly more than one acre. It is now an eight-acre landscape with integrity. The one word that comes to mind whenever I hear about this project is how invasive it is. So I have to disagree about the changes that are being proposed, other than maybe a few trees. They are now more invasive. Okay? The building looks like it was the cheapest way it could be built. And it, the traffic changes are more invasive for people who live here. The Saker laws list examples of what would require a positive declaration. And this project somehow, which is pretty remarkable, actually checks off almost every single criterion. You know the karma of the project when you realize that people in their 60s who had lived in Williams for 30 or 40 years were asked to leave in the middle of the pandemic. They had raised their families there. This neighborhood does have a tone and character. It is a peaceful one, and it is a warm one. And those buildings in any town in Europe and in many towns around the world would be the treasure of the town. And they have been neglected and painted a dark and ugly color and left with no landscaping. It's no wonder people think the problem is the building. Vassar Vice President Brian Swarthout said on May 21st to the planning board, "The neighborhood has developed around Vassar, and really, Vassar sets the foundation for the community's character." And that's the truth. And that will happen when we have a 50-room industrial hotel and conference center instead of a beautiful, green neighborhood center, one of the last ones in the town.
All right. Thanks, Jen.
From the Town Master Plan, I quote, "Right now, the central corner at College View is only developed on the far side, while the southern Vassar-owned side of this main intersection is inactive space most of the time. Vassar should redesign its frontage to open access, direct access to Arlington, and encourage its on-campus services to be fulfilled in the neighborhood center." The building's footprint is two acres. There are eight acres of open space on the corner of College and Raymond. And guess what? The bucolic beauty of this treasure that Vassar has would not actually be destroyed. The Inn and Institute could look out upon it instead of destroying it. Your alumni could come and look out upon the beauty from the beautiful glass windows that you designed, to see the beauty, not to destroy it. Okay, I will read a few of the criterion before my time is up. This neighborhood is past capacity.
Can you wrap up? The time has clicked off.
People have already been killed and injured due to traffic, and we need a POSDEC to evaluate these criterion because this project meets almost every one of them. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks, Jen. Anyone else? Not seeing any raised hands at the moment. If you're on a phone, you can use star six to unmute. But as I said, currently, well, we have, yep, let's see, a hand just popped up. Let's see, Judy Elkin. Judy? You need to unmute yourself or... Judy Elkin?
Thank you.
Yes.
Can you hear me? Yeah. I've been a resident of the Arlington area for over 50 years. And I actually lived around the corner from the proposed site on Fulton Court for over 20 years. And interestingly enough, I studied environmental design at Vassar under Jay Johnson. And I do have a very keen interest in what's going on here. A lot has been said, and a lot more eloquently than I could put it. My concern that I really want to put forward is traffic. I have read about the proposals on College Avenue, but I'm not really as familiar with what has been proposed for the other arteries, College View, which is very densely traveled. What can I say? And it is a very narrow street. I mean, for that matter, Raymond is too narrow for what it carries right now. And that would be my concern, whether this building would go on either side, even if it went on the College View side. I would still be very concerned about traffic as a real issue in this whole design.
All right. Thanks, Judy.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, anyone else? I haven't, I don't see any other raised hands at the moment.
Look for a minute.
Yep. Not seeing any. Okay.
Right. I'm here. My hand's raised.
Oh, your hand's raised. All right. We'll take that kind of raised hand, too.
Okay. I'm Karen Robertson. I live on College Avenue, not in college housing, thank goodness. And I am very concerned about the destruction of the residential nature of the street, as many have said. And I also want to, I mean, I agree with Judy, that the traffic is going to be horrendous. As anybody who has tried to use Raymond Avenue during the farmer's market, you know how very difficult it is to actually get out into traffic there. And I guess we all take different routes. It seems paradoxical that we have spent time trying to mitigate traffic with those very good traffic circles. And now we're going to be building a hotel to draw much more traffic into a residential neighborhood. I think it's going... And then also, given Vassar's inability to maintain the buildings that it has, we are going to see a decrepit building in about 20 years, which is going to look like one of those ghastly motels on Route 9, which will be falling down. The college will complain that they can't fund it anymore. And it will have weddings. It will be an ugly wedding venue, which will ruin the quiet and peacefulness of the street, which is already fairly heavily trafficked. So that's my objection, and I hope you will declare a positive declaration.
All right. Thanks, Karen. Any others? Not seeing any hands raised on the Zoom, and I don't see anyone waving at us on the screen.
Yes, Susan Stevens. Susan Stevens is waving, isn't she?
Someone's waving?
No, we can't see her.
We can't see that. Okay.
Unmute yourself.
Yeah, so if you want to unmute yourself, if you're trying to speak, that would be fine.
Hi. My name is Susan Stevens, and I'm an alum of the college. I've lived, my property butts onto the golf course. I've lived in my house for 40 years. Vassar, I worked at the college for 25 years, and I care deeply about the college. I know Betsy knows that I've objected from the beginning, the way this project was done in a top-down manner. But just in terms of what people have been talking about, the traffic, the next item on the agenda is the Arthur S. May Development, which is also going to add traffic to the mix in Arlington. So that, in combination with the traffic from the Inn and Institute, is going to make Arlington, I mean, it'll be jammed up the way College View used to get jammed up, where the traffic sat, you'd sit for 10 minutes to get from one block to the next. So I'm concerned about that, among other things. But since we've been talking about traffic, I think it's important that you have to consider it in the context of other development that's being carried out in Arlington now.
All right. Thanks, Susan. Okay, again, looking for hands raised on the Zoom or, I guess, any alternative, either on the screen or you can just unmute yourself. Not seeing any.
Seeing none, I move the adjournment site plan public hearing to when we think we have to go through. Let's go to May. I move the adjournment site plan public hearing to June 17th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn the hearing. Call to question. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are the board members opposed? That motion passes seven to zero. Uh, let's see. Before we go around the board for comments, do you have any additional comments, Lisa?
No, I have no further comments. Well, actually, the board has before a draft negative declaration for its consideration. And earlier today, we received some comments from the engineer correcting and clarifying three points in there, which I provided to the board. One was the permit number for the SWIP, and one was a phrasing, and one added additional details about the SWIP for the drainage. So if the board were inclined to consider the negative declaration this evening, I ask that they include Andy's amendments to that declaration.
Yes, I did see that. Okay. Thank you. All right. I think I'll start off by saying, you know, the board members have carefully studied this project for over two years, as some of the people have said. We've weighed both things, and we've heard positive and negative comments. I personally believe Vassar has these additional mitigation that they have proposed as we sent them back to look for what they could do to help. I like the additional changes on College Avenue, as well as, I think, one of the biggest things is the imperpetuity of the green space of what's remaining if this moves forward. Many colleges have hotels and institutes these days. Let me see what I was going to say. They've... All right. Well, we'll go forward from here, go around the board with comments, see if anyone has anything to say. I'll start with... Start with Nicole.
I have no comments this evening. Thank you.
All right. Ben? Do you have it? Oh, you're on mute, Ben. Can't hear what you're...
No, I don't have any comments at this time. Thank you.
All right. Rocco?
No comments at this time.
Ahmed?
Ahmed, you're on mute. Maybe come back to Ahmed?
Yep. Joan?
No, I have no comments at this time. Thank you.
Bob? I was talking. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Ahmed.
Oh, sorry. I was on mute. I didn't realize that. Like I said, I know this topic has been asked for the board to consider over the past few years. And I have great confidence in the Vassar institution. I mean, when I came to this area, I was happy to be in a town where an outstanding institution known across the whole country is in my neighborhood. And I know that I came about 30 years ago, and you look at Raymond Avenue nowadays compared to that, it really had been revitalized. So I agree with some of the comments from the neighborhood. And my comments on that is every medicine has bad sides and good sides, and really have to weigh, the board is our task, to weigh the good versus the bad, and hopefully the reward is more than the rest at the end of the day. From what I've seen, Vassar has extended a lot of good faith in keeping good with the neighbors and with the board and with the town. And I understand the concern of the community. But one of the things we have to remember is that we really need to revitalize the town of Poughkeepsie and make it more attractive to... and make it more attractive to businesses and other students coming in here. I know that, the other thing that I heard quite a bit about the historical building, and most of the time we talk about history, and we forget sometimes that we are going to be history in hundred years from now. And I hope that whatever we establish in place of that building, if we agree on it, is to be contested by the same force about hundred years from now by the other genera, future generation. So I ask Vassar, when they look at that building, to keep that in mind as they move forward, is to establish a landmark that will be part of the university, the institution, the college, and also part of a community that two hundred years from now, they would be proud of. So I'm, in finale, I understand, but I think change sometimes is tough. And we have to see.
All right, thanks Ahmed. In general, this, you know, will take up some of the green area, but it's, it's supported by our, our town comprehensive plan. That shows a lot of construction on the green area, that's another one of my thoughts. And I do want to say also, I like their, the fact that they've hired a landscape architect, that's, that's gonna really soften the look of anything that's there. But I think it, architecture is kind of a subjective thing.
Carl, we didn't get Bob?
Yep, that's, oh, right. Yep, and Bob?
Yeah, I just want to make one observation relative to Williams House. My, I have a son who attended University of Virginia, and a grandson who is there now. And on the campus there, University of Virginia was created by Thomas Jefferson quite a while ago. And one of the most sought-after places to live for the upperclassman is in this area alongside kind of a, a long green space, where they're very rustic rooms. They don't have your own showers, et cetera, but there's a lottery to do that. It's a very popular place on campus. I don't know what they've done over the centuries to maintain that, and I don't know what's been done with the Williams House. But I think, you know, there's an opportunity, maybe, that could have been achieved, to advertise this in a more positive way. So that's the only comment I want to make right now.
All right, thanks Bob. I'm gonna say, you know, change is always difficult. It's, it's been a, it's been a project that's been with us for, for three years, as people have said. And we've, so we have studied it. I've visited the site many times myself, and walked it, trying to understand. I attend the farmer's market there regularly. And I'm, I'm happy that they're proposing power and water be available to the farmer's market, as well as better vehicle access than what is there now. So I think there's a lot of positives to this, to this project, as well as the, the loss of some open space. And as I said, having that imper perpetuity, open space is a good thing. I like that they've changed their parking plan completely, that moves it further from adjacent housing. So... So I believe that they've done all they can, they've, can I have, uh... They've, I mean, one of the best sites for the project, alternate site, was on the other side of the street by the tennis courts, but that, they had already been planning, and they, they spelled that out in a workshop a couple of months ago, that they're planning an admissions office there, and I do not believe there's room there for both of them. Can somebody from Vassar comment on that, you know, what they think for space over there?
Yes, thank you very much. Did you ask a comment on space on the other side of the street?
Yes, cuz I know you're planning the...
Yeah, yeah, and I'm gonna turn this to Brian Swordhat, who's studied this.
All right, cuz I know, I know someone, at least one person had said, you know, could they both exist over there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we looked really carefully at this, and I think Brian can address the question for the board. Thanks.
Yeah, somebody made reference to seven or eight acres over there, and, so we looked at it. And if you, that includes the existing parking that is over there, North Lot, which is still needed, so it's not really a building location. It includes the area where all the large trees are, that go along Raymond Avenue and College View Avenue. It includes the, both tennis courts that are over there. So if you exclude the parking lot, North Lot, and if you exclude the large trees that run along the two streets, there's really about three and a half acres there, and that's the area that we have cited for the admissions building that we're looking at.
Okay, so the admissions would be taking up that whole area. And I know you said you would have to move some tennis courts, even, even with that building, and leave the, leave the, leave some that the neighbors could use as well.
That's the intent.
All right, I think we've studied this quite a bit. So I moved that the planning board as lead agency adopted resolution adopting a secret negative declaration for the Vassar Inan Institute project as prepared by council and staff. Do I, do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Start with myself, aye. Ahmed?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Joan?
I'm opposed, I don't, I don't...
Opposed, and Bob?
Nay, I'm opposed.
The motion passes five to one with one abstained. What's that?
Who abstained?
Uh, Bob.
There was two.
What's that?
And also abstained.
Who abstained? Joan abstained also?
Ahmed, you need to mute your phone when, when you're not, not voting or commenting.
I thought, I think Joan said nay, and Bob abstained.
Joan, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I said nay also.
Okay, okay, nevermind, nevermind. So motion passes five to two.
If I could just thank you very, very much, I really appreciate it, the planning board and Carl. Thank you for leading this, and I know you're all volunteers and work so hard for the town. And we really appreciate your support very, very much. Thank you.
Thanks.
The board needs to consider the zoning text amendment referral to the staff, to the town board at this point. I don't know if there's any discussion on the draft that the board has before it.
Yep, I, I had looked it over. I'll go around to see. Thanks Lisa. It definitely is very restrictive to, could only be used possibly for, for Vassar, Marist, or Detrus Community College in its way, and it has to be a certain number of acreage, et cetera. Does anybody on the board have any comments on that specifically? I'll go around. Nicole?
No.
Ben?
No.
Rocco?
No.
Ahmed?
No.
Bob?
No.
Joan?
No.
Right, seeing none, would you like to do some motions, Nicole?
I move that the planning board convey a recommendation to the town board that is adopt a revised proposed zoning text amendment to add a new definition for college/university conference center as a special use permitted in the institutional district subject to a new supplemental regulation two-ten-dash-one-one-three as attached.
Second. Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Nay.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes six to one.
I move that the planning board defer action on the application pending town board action on proposed zoning amendment and revise submittal, subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by town, by planning department as adequacy and completeness included, but not limited to the following one through thirteen.
Second. Moved and seconded to defer. Called to question by roll call vote. Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. All right, we, we'll be looking at site plan issues coming up in a future meeting. I encourage you to, Vassar, to look at a recent note from county planning that came in today, with some site plan issues, and we'll look forward from there. I know this has been a difficult project. Change is always tough, as I say. But I think Vassar is, is a good neighbor in general to the community and to the town, and I think they'll do the right thing moving forward.
Thank you, Carl. We'll do our very best.
All right, next up on the agenda is down the street a bit, Raymond Avenue School Property Redevelopment. Jacob, I assume you're out there somewhere?
Hey, board, this is Kyle Bardwell from the Chasin Companies. I'm here representing Jacob Reckus and Raymond Avenue Redevelopment LLC.
Okay, thanks Kyle.
Nice to see everyone virtually tonight. In Ju, in June of two thousand and twenty, we submitted and received subdivision and site plan approval conditional for Raymond Avenue redevelopment. Since then, we made some changes to the site plan, which we submitted in a sketch plan in January of two thousand and twenty-one. We were at a meeting in February where we discussed the sketch plan with the board, heard some feedback, and made a detailed submission in March of two thousand and twenty-one. Since then, we've received comments from agencies. We've had a couple of meetings with town departments, including the fire department, town engineer, water department, and sewer. We haven't seen any comments that we don't think are, we can react to and change. And tonight, we're here to receive site plan and subdivision approval once again for the project. We have Jacob on the line as well, and he's gonna go over some of the changes that occurred over the past year. And we're also gonna have our architect on the call tonight to discuss some of the architecture. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Jacob, and I'm gonna share our site plan.
Sounds good.
All right, good evening, everybody. Jacob Reckus from The Applicant. Thanks Kyle for putting that up there. So first off, I want to thank everybody for taking the time and allowing us to present. And importantly, I want to thank the planning board and the town board, the bid, historic commission members for being involved in this process as we've been working towards getting started and, and moving forward. So as Kyle mentioned, at a high level, there's a few minor changes that were submitted a couple of weeks ago. We are now proposing to keep the school building, which is an effort that we have been working on for quite some time, as we committed from day one that we would keep looking at options until the day before it got knocked down. We were close to knocking it down, and found some architectural and engineering tricks that we can do to maintain the building. So the new plan includes apartment residences on the second and third floor of the school, and converting the ground floor into commercial space. The main access for that commercial space is gonna be behind the school, so tenants and users can drive in and to the back, and access from the back. The buildings in front of the school were, used to be two separate buildings. They're now a combined building, which is more cost-effective, more energy-efficient, and we're gonna be seeking a National Green Building Standard certification. And the courtyard, which was in between the two buildings up front, has slid to the south side of the entrance, which we think is a nicer feel, and will allow walkers, pedestrians on Raymond Avenue to have a congregating space to get together and meet up before the entrance of, of the property. So we are excited. We, again, as Kyle mentioned, we've been working with town departments and working through the site plan issues, and I want to thank everybody for all the efforts so far. And we have Ken Iverson, our architect, who is here and ready to present the architecturals and materials. So Ken, pass over to you.
All right, thanks.
Kyle, can you stop screen sharing? So as Jacob mentioned, our first building is now a consolidated building that is approximately two hundred feet long. It's gonna be three stories. On the first floor, we have retail and some residential units. And then on the second and third floors, we have residential apartments. So the exterior materials that we're looking at here is, for the first floor, we have a lot of storefront with a lot of blazing to allow good views into the first floor spaces. And then on the second and third floors, we have more of a residential scale windows in there. As far as exterior building materials go, we have masonry, we have face brick. These are flat elevation views, so everybody knows. We have face brick with soldier courses, rolex for the window framing surrounds. And then we have a synthetic stucco in between two sections of the building. The lower base course of the retail spaces, we have a limestone, thin stone veneer. And then for the roofing materials, we have asphalt roof shingles. And then in the center section, we have a unique feature with more limestone-looking material, maybe a slightly different color than the base material over here to set it apart from the other buildings. So this is the main building in the front. We, we have a three-D views. So really, what we're looking and doing is trying to create, we're gonna be using a, more of a historic blend of masonry, which would be what we're proposing right now, and you know, depending upon availability and everything else, is we're gonna be looking at using a Glengarry colonial-style brick, which will have, I guess, some flashing to it, so it kind of is indicative of how bricks were made, you know, one hundred, two hundred years ago, you know, all the way back. And then, of course, we have the stucco. We're looking at using some black storefront anodized, or maybe some anodized aluminum. We have double-hung, single, actually, single-hung windows. And then the, the limestone, thin stone veneer. So this is the, the main building that's right along Raymond Ave. The pocket park that Jacob alluded to earlier is over here. When we go from Jacob Ave, working our way into the site, we have the original school building with its numerous additions over the years. And that's pretty much gonna remain as it exists today, with the fuel stone base course, the existing roofing, and then, of course, the masonry with a window replacement project as well. So we have the exterior of the school building. We're doing a very modest canopy on the west side for an entry point, and to provide handicap accessibility to the lower level, we actually have a little concealed ramp in here with a little bit of a railing system, and these are the doors into the building there. And that's simply the, the school, so it's pretty much gonna remain a little bit freshening up and as it is. And that's simply the school, so it's pretty much going to remain a little bit freshening up and as it is currently. And then just to give everybody a quick overview of the site, so that we can kind of see what we're looking at here. We have the proposed building C in the back, which is still under development. But here we have the Pocket Park in the front, the new building along Raymond Ave, and then, of course, the existing school building.
All right, thank you. Anything further to mention, Jacob?
No, I think we've been in front of you guys quite a bit of time, quite a number of times. And again, we really appreciate all the back and forth, and this has been a continual process for everybody. And so we appreciate the help, and we're hopeful to keep moving forward.
All right, thank you. Let me go to Eric for department's recommendation. You're on mute, Eric, still? Eric, you're on mute? Seems stuck here. So let me go first to Andy's. Is there any remaining issues? I think there's a water and...
Yes. So Andy Lern, CPL, engineer for the town. We've been working with Jacob's team to resolve some water and sewer issues that have arisen with the addition of the subdivision of the site. We believe we have come to an agreement on the water line, which is going to run from Route 44 through the site. And they've been able to obtain an easement or an agreement with neighboring property to the south to be able to run that water line all the way to Fulton Street on the south end of the, south end of the area. That's going to help improve water flow for that whole general area. So we feel that that's a good improvement for the town, and it's, it makes sense for the town to accept dedication of that line, even though generally the town doesn't accept water lines over private property. In this case, it makes sense. We're still talking about the sewer, similar issue, where there's talk of either dedication of a short stub of sewer line that runs into the site to the town. Alternatively, it would be a transportation corporation, but Jacob's team is trying to avoid that for a couple of reasons. We're not sure about that just yet. We feel there may be some other alternatives, but we're still talking to them, and we feel that we will be able to resolve that one way or another without much issue. We, we're also have a few technical comments on the stormwater pollution prevention plan, but nothing that we feel is going to be a problem to be resolved.
All right, great. Eric, are you back yet?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. What's, what say you for?
Let's see, these, there are several actions before the board tonight, depending on how it goes. There's a public hearing that's been advertised. Their board has a draft negative declaration for seeker review to consider. If the board proceeds with a big debt, then it should also consider a determination of consistency with the development master plan approved by the town board in 2019 for this amended development layout. And then it could go on to consider site plan and subdivision approval, site plan and architectural approval, and then subdivision approval. That's the range of actions. A couple of points and information that have come in for this submittal. Just a couple of days ago, we did receive, or one of the conditions of the Parks and Recreation Historic Preservation was they determined that the amended layout should be met with a revised letter of resolution regarding disposition of the building. And that was signed by the applicant as agreed with OPRHP. A couple of days ago, you have that in your packets. Andy addressed the one change in the water and sewer service for the site, and the board can proceed with those options in front of it. There is a, for the subdivision and for the site plan, there is a, there's a, the applicant has not proposed a recreation dedication at this time. So the board, part of the recommendation before the board, or the conditions before the board, is a recreation fee. The applicant could always come back. I know there's an open space on the lot if they wanted to come back later and propose it, that the board reconsidered that, then he could do so. But right now, there is no proposed park or open space dedication on the plan. There is, we did also just receive comments from the Duchess County Planning Department this afternoon, and those are not included in your recommendation. So if you would like any of their comments to be included, then you should point out, point them out.
Yep.
I think those are our comments.
All right, thanks. Next, Mark's still hanging in there, talked about traffic and parking.
Yeah. Yeah, so Mark Pacharo, we reviewed, from JMC, we reviewed the revised development plan. And overall, we find the site circulation to be an improvement compared to the previous, previous development plan, specifically in the location just south of building D and where in the location of building E, there were previously proposed surface lots, which incorporated some additional turning conflicts that were there. So this simplifies the previous plan and improves on the site circulation compared to a previous development plan. Overall, the development plan is anticipated to reduce the number of trips associated with the development compared to the previous development plan during all the studied peak hours. Also, the development plan exceeds the number of required parking spaces on the development. The remaining part of my, my comments are really more technical in nature, related to a lot of pedestrian signage on the site. But overall, pretty minor comments from my end.
All right, thank you, Mark. Yep. That drives with the, you know, fact that the hotel's going away, it'll be a lot less need for parking as well, less traffic compared with the previously approved plan.
Kyle, this is Eric again. I forgot to mention that I did send out to the board this afternoon. Staff and consultants did identify a couple of text changes in the draft negative declaration and the resolution that you have for consideration. The one in the negative declaration is mostly is syntax, essentially. And then the change in the amended, the change in the resolution is merely to identify direct the comments from the Duchess County Department of Planning.
Yep, saw that, thanks. We'll include that as, as part of the resolution. My two cents quick, the, I did think that county did have a good point about the pedestrian connection on the back left corner there. There's already a crosswalk on the other property, so might be easy to tie into that somehow. Take a look at that. I did want to ask, have you ever figured out, you know, county suggested swapping building E, but that, I think that goes against the point of keeping that little public green space there. But have you figured out a use for building E as well, or is it still up in the air?
So that, so building E remains a to-be-determined building. But we thought that bringing the green space up and making it more user-friendly, especially in light of what everybody's talking about, would, would be helpful for, for the area.
If I may, this is Stuart Messinger with Chasen. To the first comment, I, when we looked at it, because we only got it like everybody else late in the day, I'm not sure that we totally understood what we were being asked to do. Is it simply the stripe on our property to make a connection?
I think they, I don't know if you got it, there was an illustration on the back of the county's letter where they showed that the crosswalk on the parking for College U Towers goes up to and maybe or maybe not over the property line. And it's close to the edge of the proposed access road on Jacob's site. And so they were asking that at the end of that crosswalk, where it's on Jacob's, on Jacob's property, that it's, it complete a pedestrian way from the end of that crosswalk to the existing sidewalk network at the back of building C.
In whatever way.
That was my understanding of it.
I mean, it sounds, it sounds like on our end, it's really striping and not construction of sidewalks, if I understood it correctly.
They said pedestrian connection.
There could be, there could be a short segment of sidewalk along the road and then a striping across the road. However, I'd leave it to you work with Eric to figure out implementation.
For that, okay. You know, Jacob, I don't, Jacob and I were talking about it earlier, and we were scratching our heads. I think I understand it now. I don't think it's a problem, Jacob, unless you have a problem with it.
I, I think we, I mean, I think we certainly should look and figure out if there's a way to feasibly do it. And I, I trust the way we've been doing this, that we can work with the town and county and, you know, present what the options are.
All right.
So, okay with that.
All right, let's go around the board for additional comments. Start with Ben? Oh, right, sorry. Sorry, sorry, hold on, Ben. We, we have a public hearing. I forgot to open that first. So I move we open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any board members opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Anyone raise their hand to, to speak about this project? Or star six to unmute if you're on the phone. We're looking through the Zoom.
Yeah, we're looking through to see if anyone has their hand raised in Zoom. Again, you can just unmute yourself if that's easier for you.
Yes, I had a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead. Who's that?
Okay, yeah, sorry. My name is Colin Brodsky. I own the property that's on the northwest corner of this project. So in, in general, I think, obviously, I'm very excited to see the site redevelop. I think it's, looks like great news to see something happen there. I just wanted to try to make sure I understood a little more clearly what, if anything, might be happening adjacent to that area. On the site plan, it looks like it's largely, you know, the sort of the rocky area up on the northwest side looks like it will be mostly undisturbed, and, and I just wanted to kind of confirm if that's the case. And the only reason I brought it up is I went by the property one day, and there was a stake in the, you know, right in our driveway, super close. And I just wanted to make sure there wasn't going to be a scenario where, you know, a fence was going to go up on the line that could challenge, you know, snow removal or, you know, things like that. But if the intent is that most of that area is going to be left with any kind of buffer, you know, I, I think that looks good to me, and, you know, generally, I see this project as a great positive. So that, right now, that's really the only concern I would bring forward.
All right, thanks. I think they're planning just mainly snow storage in that area, but...
Yeah, if I can add, I appreciate that comment, and I, I have a feeling that was the surveyors just making sure that they were staking. I, I don't think we're intending, well, we are not intending to go right up to your property line there. So, appreciate that. Thanks.
Anyone else who would like to make a comment? Again, you can raise your hand in Zoom. Or just unmute yourself if, oh, I see Anne Shershun. Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. Yeah, Anne Shershun's, six-four town council person. Yeah, I just want to say we are very excited with the changes and the developments in this project. We really think it not only does it line up nicely with our new comprehensive plan, but I think it's going to be a real asset to Arlington. And with the previous one, all the concerns about traffic, sadly, losing the hotel is actually going to greatly reduce the amount of traffic coming in and out of the site. That it's going to be basically a residential site with just some retail along the street. So I think it's going to be a great fit for Arlington. We're really excited. Can't wait for Jacob to get started.
Thanks, Anne. Anyone else?
I'm sorry, I missed that one.
Cynthia Cannon.
Cynthia?
Yeah, hi. I'm Cynthia Cannon Day, and I'm the administrator at the Arlington Reformed Church directly across the street on Raymond. And I have a question about if there's going to be any community parking availability, and also what changes, if any, are proposed for Raymond Avenue.
I don't believe there's any, I don't believe there's any changes to Raymond Avenue. They'll be adding a wider sidewalk in front of the new buildings there for some on-street dining, I believe. But any further comments, Jacob, on that?
Yeah, the, the parking is, is dedicated for the site. And the changes, the Raymond Avenue is a state highway. So we had actually approached the state requesting that we add some, some parallel parking on the street, and they were not inclined to do that. So no real changes to Raymond Avenue.
So they still have that merge lane there then instead? All right.
Okay, I've got a couple of hands raised. Bob Legacy?
Yeah, good evening. Bob Legacy, Director of the Arlington Business Improvement District. And again, Jacob has kept the board of directors very involved. In fact, he made a presentation a couple of weeks ago. We find this project to be immensely important for the whole area as we're working on a master plan for Arlington on revigorating, revitalizing. And this goes a long way in helping to anchor the middle of our business district. And the Pocket Park, I see, is a major asset, maybe a place to have park and get to parks and maybe concerts and get-togethers for the town. But more importantly, it puts people in the district who can walk and leave their car. And the Arlington Town Center is all about, you know, getting people out on the street, and this project, I think, does that. And so, Jacob, get this started as soon as possible, please. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Bob.
Next is Elena Collins.
Hi, thank you for that presentation. I was having a little trouble following what was actually going to be happening to that former school building based on the rendering that was shown on the screen. It almost looked like the building would remain as is in back of new construction. Is that correct, or will something else be happening to that building? I don't, don't know who's best, you know, going to be able to answer that question. So I just put it out there, so to whoever wants to answer.
Jacob, you can comment a couple.
Yeah, happy to clarify that. So the building will remain. The primary change is that we will be, the ground floor of the school when it was built was built in phases, and so it is sort of a roller coaster of stairs. And we are mostly going to be flattening that, so the ground floor will become a commercial space where the middle section is all going to be one flat floor, which is a big change that we didn't think we were able to do previously, that we now can do. And so the ground floor, so the whole building, the, the building facing Raymond will remain. The structures behind the main section in front will go. And there'll be commercial space on the ground floor and residential on the top two floors above it.
All right, thanks for clarifying, Jacob. Anyone else wish to comment on this project? Taking one last look through the...
Yeah, I'm taking a look through. It seemed to be... Yeah, doesn't, doesn't appear to be anybody else.
All right, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any board members opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, I'll go around the board for comments. Go ahead, Ben.
Okay, I was going to say, as well as everybody else that I've been hearing, I like this project too. I like the, the changes, the big improvements, positive. I think there's a better flow to the whole site, the way, the way you've done it. And I like the aesthetics of the building, the architecture, and good job. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ben.
We need it.
Nicole?
Yeah, I'll just say what Ben says.
All right, Rocco?
I'll echo everything as well. I think it is a very good addition to that Arlington business and the town center in general. And I look forward to having it in place.
All right, thanks, Rocco. Bob?
Yeah, I like what you've been, being able to keep the original building there. And uh, I assume that that's now fully ADA compliant with the changes you described.
So the original building, it would almost be impossible to make ADA compliant because there's seven different levels, but we are making the majority of the first floor ADA compliant by having a ramp into the floor and then leveling probably about 75% of the floor plate.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
And then, Daniel, I've walked up apartments above, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there was an elevator in this building.
Correct.
All right, um, thanks, Bob. Joan?
I agree with the sentiment across the board. I think it's a good project and an improvement and looking forward to its construction. Thank you.
Ahmed?
I'm with everyone. We're echoing their comments. Looking forward to see this town becoming great.
Yeah, I'll say the same. I think the architecture of that first building looks good there. Got some of it, kind of a Tudor style. And it looks like you're minimizing modifications to the school and saving that. That was great. You were able to do that. It's the first plan we approved. Wound up tearing it down, so. Thanks for, thanks for working to do that, Jacob. And move forward to recommendate with the motions.
I move that the planning board as lead agency hereby determine that the Raymond Avenue School Property Redevelopment Project as amended, second amended site plan and preliminary four lot major subdivision would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the seeker negative declaration per type one action dated April 15th, 2021.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board find that the Raymond Avenue School Property Redevelopment Project as amended, second amended site plan and preliminary four lot major subdivision is consistent with the development master plan for this project as adopted by the town board on August 21st, 2019.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
And Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board adopt an amended resolution of conditional site plan approval for the Raymond Avenue School Property Second Amended Site Plan as prepared by council staff and consultants and subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. And said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of and not limited to the following, one through seventeen.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. At this point, uh, just, you know, you did a presentation on the architecture. Just want to double check with the board members that if they have any additional architectural comments. This is just for, for the front building A B and the school building. We'll have to come back for architecture in the, in the rear buildings at some point. Any further comments from anyone? No. All right, go ahead with the motion, Nicole?
I move the planning board grant conditional architectural review approval for mixed-use buildings A B along Raymond Avenue and D former school of the Raymond Avenue School Property Redevelopment Second Amended Site Plan and defer architectural review of buildings C residential five stories to rear and E commercial south of Main Access Drive, subject to the following comments of the planning board meeting on architectural review.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
And I move that the planning board grant conditional preliminary four lot major subdivision approval, waive a public hearing on final four lot major subdivision approval and grant conditional finer, final four lot major subdivision approval of the Raymond Avenue School Property Redevelopment Project as amended, subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. And said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of and not limited to one through twelve.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
It sounds like it'll be great for the area.
Thank you. Bye.
I think I hear construction equipment coming down the arterial now.
Let's hope. Good night all.
Next up, we have One Dutchess Avenue.
Oh, I just...
Good evening, everybody. Louis Calpin for the applicant.
Evening. You have any, anything to say since the previous?
Uh, we received the latest comments from the consultants and the department and we're reviewing them. We will be able to respond to them before the, um, April 26th. And if it pleased the board, we'd appreciate to be heard at the next meeting.
All right, sounds good. It looks like you did some changes with the trash and the, and the crosswalk to the trail. There's some additional comments. So we'll, we'll go take it from Kristen.
Thank you, Lou, for, excuse us on. Thank you, Lou, for the brief overview. The application is on for public hearing, seeker review, coastal consistency review, site plan review, aquatic resources permit review, and architectural review. Tonight, we are focused on site plan, aquatic resources, and seeker. We do have Liz Axelson on who will address the seeker related comments and Mark Kataro on for traffic related comments. There were a couple that were carried over from the last couple of reviews. We also have Andy Learn on for engineering. From a planning department perspective, though, staff is recommending that you open the public hearing this evening and adjourn the hearing to May 20th, 2021. The applicant may be able to pull together responses to comments and provide a new submission in time for the May meeting. So we are asking that you amend that resolution from June to May. If the applicant does require additional time, they can always request that and we would just adjourn it from the May meeting onto June.
Yep.
There are a, a number of items that were documented in the staff report, everything from refuse enclosure placement and discussions that may or may not need to be carried out further with the city of Poughkeepsie. The, the applicant, as it was alluded to, there was a discussion that transpired yesterday afternoon among staff. So coordination is the key word right now. We're looking to sort of memorialize some of these outstanding items, whether we get direction from the city, whether or not they're on board for some of them, or the applicant would be able to document, document or memorialize ownership. Every, again, from, everything from snow storage, the ownership of the riverfront park parcel that's located in the town, location of refuse. The applicant had provided previously a refuse enclosure at the northwest corner of the property. The planning board had provided comments indicating that they were unhappy with the location along the riverfront. And we thought maybe we could seek an alternative location on the site within the town limits. Staff is recommending that the applicant take a look at the northeast corner. We understand that there might be some issues or concerns with grade in that area, but we think that it is worthy of a review. Bearing in mind, though, that the applicant is also very close to the minimum required parking counts. So it is a, a discussion and coordination will have to continue to move on between the town, the city, and the applicant. And then, you know, there, there's another conversation that's sort of ongoing where the applicant has provided a set of, or a breakdown of recreation fees as it would apply to this project. It is a condition that, that must be met. This is where the planning board, you know, should take note that the applicant has requested an offset of fees. We thought that the, the breakdown was, you know, amenable and, and, but, you know, there, there's, there's still some discretion where the planning board should be weighing in, you know, if there should be an allowance for any offset of those fees. And I will actually defer to Lisa. I, I don't know if you would want to jump in on that. But staff this evening is recommending the adjournment of the public hearing to May and deferring action with comments. And with that, I would pass it on to Liz Axelson for seeker.
All right, thanks. Kristen, go ahead, Liz.
Good evening. I'm Liz Axelson, planner from CPL. And my aspect of the review is specifically focused on the state environmental quality review. As with prior seeker reviews, because this has been through an environmental impact statement process, each decision-making body has to do their own findings. And so that comes to the planning board in the form of a project assessment. And so we have been issuing comments and working in offline consultation with the project team to try to, basically, and then at the end of the day, provide you with the numbers that assure that the project is either consistent with or slightly better than whatever was presented that caused the town board to rezone to the waterfront housing overlay district. So we did have some offline consultation the other day and we'll be working through with Lou and his engineer. And the linchpin on this was that the number, the numbers related to the parkland and to recreation amenities and green space were unclear. So I wrote some very boring, specific comments, but the answers to those things would allow the planning board to proceed. So, anyway, let's hope that the next submittal provides clarity on all those values and we can see this as a, a project with a better look, more green space, nice amenities for future residents, and all the improvements that they need to, to have a functional site.
So you think you'll be able to draft?
That's it.
Think you'll be able to draft findings then for next, for the next meeting?
That's the idea. If we, if we get the information that we need, that's the idea, is to start working on a draft findings for the May meeting.
Okay, great. I mean, I was down there recently and everything's, the construction's going well. Apartments look nice. And it's going to be duplicated in the, from, in the town as well, so.
Yep.
Let's go to Andy first for what's left on engineering.
Sure. So most of our comments have been addressed. Many of them have been addressed specifically with granted drainage. Most of them have been taken care of. We do have a few minor comments remaining on the, on grading, which again, may, if the refuge enclosure is relocated, we'll have to look at that again, of course, to that area in the northeast corner. Most of our comments in this round relate to water and sewer and whether or not a transportation corporation will be required. Lou's team has provided responses to many of the questions that were provided already. We will evaluate those questions with a town attorney. But it, based on the responses preliminarily, it does look like they can avoid a transportation corporation. So that's, that's all I have.
It's kind of all one big parcel, right?
Right. All under one ownership.
Under one, yes.
Yeah.
Carl, I apologize. We also have Carol Knapp on the line who is reviewing for the aquatic resources permit.
All right. It's been a while. Carol, do you have any comments to make at this time?
Hey, guys. No, actually, it's just, just very short. We are going to likely issue an aquatic resource permit. However, the, the comment was we need the hundred-foot buffer on there and a quantitative, quantitative analysis, basically just give us a number. How much are you disturbing so that we can issue the permit? I know it's already been done. The park is, you know, entirely within the buffer, but we just need those numbers quantified in order to issue the permit. So that's all in the, in the letter. That's all.
All right, thank you, Carol. And Mark for traffic parking concerns?
Yeah, so we, we had two comments. Basically, one, one of our previous comments was related to the improvements at Fairview Avenue and Cedar Street. We've had direct conversations with their traffic consultant, Maze or Consulting. And they had provided memorandum which addressed our, our previous comments. So that one has been addressed. Our, our other comment relates to the pedestrian crossing to the waterfront. There's a, there's a turn on the proposed crosswalk market and it should really be a straight crossing. Just if, if someone's visibly impaired, they're not going to know that, that sidewalk, that crossing turns. So it should really be a straight crossing. So there, I'm suggesting some modifications to the site plan as related to that crossing and a curb amplification and signage. Those are all suggestions. You know, it'd be nice if that crossing was at the intersection, but in this case, it's a mid-block crossing if we keep that waterfront connection as it is where it stands. But that's the bulk of my comment is just the crosswalk.
Yeah, the gate is already built there and that fence, so it's, the endpoint is still is determined already, so we'll have to...
Yeah, and as I understand it, again, as late as yesterday afternoon, there was already some discussion with Lou's team that they would be able to accommodate that and actually maintain the parking without losing a space, I believe. So that, that is already, yeah, being worked out.
Glad all this is going on behind the scenes to get this, get this, get this project moving forward. All right.
If I may address some of the comments that have been made so far. First of all, I have our engineer Dominic Arico. I have, I have two dogs and Dominic Arico with me here tonight. And so I'm going to let Dominic address some of the engineering comments while I mute.
Thanks, Lou. Dominic?
All right, all right, I guess just, just throw me into it. The, I guess the, the two comments, the one with the, I don't know if we need to address the dumpster location at all, but as it was mentioned, it is going to be a difficult place to position it anywhere else than we already had it without losing parking spaces, having the need for setback variances, things that would meet town code and standards. And our, our development plan does allow for the refuge to be picked up where the existing site is now, which is within city limits. So it's not a matter of, of storage collection, how it's going to be done. It's a matter of the town is going to require a refuge storage within the town limits. We don't need it for the property. It's one project. It's one, it is separated by town, city, but that's how we're looking at it. And we'd like to not have one on our property within the town. And it would be controlled within the city.
I think, I think it leaves the city would have...
In order to show that on the plan, I'd like to not have to show that again. Like to maybe get some kind of comment on one way or the other. What, what, how would you handle that?
I'm going to say, city would have to agree.
I'll point out, I'll point out that in fact, in the condominium declaration that governs the entire parcel, there is a section, which I will identify for the board, that utilize, you know, that the common... utilize, you know, that the common necessities, such as garbage collection, is a part of the common purposes of the condominium, and is allowed and does not require any further approvals, easements, or any, of any nature whatsoever.
Yeah. So Lou, we'll, we'll definitely take a look at that and, and follow up offline about that. And, you know, if, if it's permissible, it's permissible, and then we just, we can move on and check that box.
Okay.
That'll be the first step.
The other, go ahead. I'm sorry.
That would just be the first step.
Just make sure the city approves.
Dominic, we was, we were hoping, as to Andy Learns' other comments, can you, can you, you know, work them into the plan without any difficulty?
Yeah. I don't see any issues with any of the other comments. The only, the thing with the crosswalk, what I like to do with that is, is yes, move it to the corner, make it perpendicular, straight across. But I also like to add sidewalk along that edge of the curb and make that a, a connection to the existing sidewalks that, that's there already in the park, that we're there. We'll have the 90-degree connection. And doing it in midstream, again, we would lose a parking spot, if not two parking spaces again. So that would be another consideration is, is how I would like to handle that there. So it would be an intersection crossing as well, but we just have to add some sidewalk along the western edge of the curb to connect the sidewalk to the crossing.
Okay, great.
And handicap ramp and everything on that side.
Sounds good.
That's what we're going to propose. I just want to bring it forward to all the other comments. I didn't really know other issues with anything else. We're making all the modifications to the tables, as recommended by Liz. And I think we're very caught up on everything. We just need to lock those few things down, and we just wanted to represent what we're going to represent back to the towns, in case you have any questions or concerns about those methods.
So, Mark, as to that traffic concern, Dominic has a way to have direct and, well, really 90-degree crosswalk without, and eliminate that angle that you were concerned about. So hopefully that'll cure your issues.
Yeah, it sounds like it, it could be. I'd just would like to see it. I know you had mentioned something about adding sidewalk on the western side of the curb. So, yeah, I'd just like to see it. That's all. But, yeah, having a straighter crossing would be my major concern.
Yep, agreed.
All right.
Let me just address, regarding, I just was curious, about the aquatic resources. We looked at the section, I think it was 116, and I was a little confused about the buffers, because it said one that less, there was nothing, there was no mention of a buffer for less than one acre. And it was between one and five acres. It was a 25-foot buffer. So I was wondering, Carol, if, how is it that it's 100-foot buffer? That's what my confusion lies.
Carol, are you still on? You're on mute.
There we go. We're, we're talking the Hudson River. I mean, all the, all the streams, I've got to check the, the actual wording in there, but, you know, the Wapandris Creek has, the main, the main creeks in the town have at least a 50-foot buffer. I believe that the Hudson has 100-foot. What is the total area disturbance?
Point 82 acres.
Point 82. Okay. Like I said, just, just put that on the plan. Put the, because you have the high watermark, put the 100-foot on there. Just indicate point, point 82, and I will find, I will find the exact wording in there, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. But it's not, it's not an issue, because it is done. It's a public benefit, the town park, all the DEC remediation. It's, it's all been a public benefit. So, like I said, we just need, we need the acreage in order to issue the permit.
Okay. We'll provide that.
It's a, it's a formality.
Okay. The other issue that I was, wanted to address tonight, okay, so regarding the recreation fees. So I had provided a calculation, you know, the recreation fees are based upon the inability to provide open space. And in lieu of that open space, you would have to pay a rec fee. So based upon the calcul, and I, and I, and I gave some, you know, mathematical formula, we suggest that would be a reasonable offset. Normally, if you just calculate it based on bedrooms, I believe the number was $140,000. And because we are providing open space in, in the nature of the Greenway Trail, the riverfront park, and we actually have a rooftop open to the public above the commercial building, you know, there were some areas that are public accessible. And so based on those calculations, we have suggested that the, the planning board, it might see its way clear to recommend, I think the number is $89,000 some odd dollars. So I was just hoping that if the board has had the opportunity to take a look at some of those, that if it could give us the benefit of, you know, its initial reaction to that, so we would know where we're going.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, we're amenable to reducing rec fees based on the, the riverfront park that you've, you've done there. But generally, onsite amenities are not part of that. So I think the only thing in question would be the rooftop.
Right.
Because, you know, it is behind a gated. So, so I'd have to see how that factors in. Lisa, do you have any comments on that?
The only thing I would add to that, Lou, we're generally in agreement with your methodology. And I agree with Carl about the rooftop. The idea of the offset is it's supposed to be recreation lands that are suitable for park. And so I don't know that a rooftop would qualify for it, even in, were it not. I don't know that that makes a big difference, because I think it's about 3,000 square feet. So, but other than that, we don't really have an objection to the process, and I'm sure the board will take it up at the next meeting, when they're doing their final recommendation. But staff in general has no concept, no problem with the methodology that you're suggesting.
Okay, great.
Lisa, while you're there, would, I know with a couple of conversations that we've had with the city, did you want to maybe just highlight some of the, the things that we still have to work out?
Sure. One of the issues is responding to Dom's comment a little bit before about the refuse. And we have no problem with there not being refuse on the town parcel, provided that the city tells us that they took into account having the extra 82 apartments and the commercial space, and they're, you know, that they're okay with the extra refuse going in there. And if it was considered as part of the city's plan already, and they're fine with it, we have no objection to it. But we just need that piece of paper to close that loop. And then the other issue was the snow storage. The city is, as I understand it, and the board may not know this yet, is close to accepting the parkland dedication offered by Lou for both parcels, the parcel in the city and the parcel in the town. They had some minor recommendations that they wanted in terms of some, you know, to avoid some trip hazards and some very minor details, but they were pretty close. But that concept does not contemplate the snow storage easement. So once again, if the, Lou wants to proceed with that snow storage easement on a parcel that's going to ultimately be owned by the city, then we just want the city to say they're okay with that. And if they do, then the town has no issue. If the city is not okay with it, then we'll find some other alternative, which may include, you know, the need to truck it off, if there's a major snowstorm, to simply remove snow from the premises, so as not to take up parking spaces or other areas. But that's something we can deal with once we hear what the city's position is on the proposed snow storage easement on property that it will be taking over.
Sounds good. Work that out then. All right. I think we're close to having, going around the board for questions. I just had one quick question for Lou. What are those, what are those two huge concrete containers on the riverfront there? Are they meter pits or something to be used in the project, or in front of?
I'm, I am not sure what you're referring to, Chairman.
Well, right, right now, it's.
Installed, or are they existing and in the ground? Because there are water meter pits.
Yeah, they're kind of just on top of the ground, on the other side, on the, right at the riverfront. So it's probably.
You have meter pits installed, and that's one of the, you know, ways that we're going to analyze water usage when it flows in. And then there are meters at the buildings and for the common area in the town. And so the town will get its water usage fees, and the, the balance would be paid to the city. But I, I don't know, I'm, I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to.
Well, I guess it, it's something that's not utilized on the site yet, I guess, just, just sitting there.
Oh, oh, that, oh, okay. Yes, there, you know, we're, we're in the process of construction for the second phase of the city, so it's very well may be what that is.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, this is a public hearing, so we do need to see if there's any members of the public who have any comments.
Yep.
Before we go to the board.
I move we open the public hearing. Moved and seconded. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Is there anyone on the call wish to comment on this project?
So like before, you can raise your hand if you're on Zoom, or simply unmute yourself. And if you're on a phone, you can use star six to unmute yourself. Or as some have done, you can just wave until we notice you. I'm not seeing any.
Well, there'll be another opportunity in May, so I, I moved that we adjourn the public hearing to May 20, 2021.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right, now we'll go around for comments. Ben?
Well, this is a good project. I like it, and I would like to see it approved and get moving. But there's too many loose ends. And I really would like to see these loose ends addressed, not only addressed, but resolved as soon as possible, so we can make some progress with this. That's all I have to say.
Yep. I mean, it's a big project, a lot of moving parts, so it's good to get everything tied up. Nicole?
My only question was to Lou, with the roof, rooftop terrace, were you putting any tables or chairs up there, or was it just going to be open space? I was, I was curious.
Well, we do have furnishings for the terraces that are only for the residents. Those are in the two residential buildings. Frankly, I don't, I'm not sure how we planned the open space that's for the general public, which is above the commercial building. I would assume that there'll be, you know, seating and some, maybe some architectural niceties, you know. It's, we won't just be some blank open space. That's not, that's not really how we, that would not be similar to what we've been providing throughout the community already. So I think we'll dress it up pretty nice.
All right.
Just, I just wanted to add, we did add into the plan some of the furniture that will be used on the property for those areas.
And on top of the, the leasing office is, is nice, nicely done, with some furniture up there. All right.
Yeah, and up of the, the buildings in the city side that have, you know, the balconies looking out on the river, and then there's a community room that's closed in, adjacent to the balcony. So we have games and, you know, areas to sit. And then outside, we have seating. So that certainly will be similar to what we're giving to the residential's in the town side. Apologize, I really hadn't focused on what we were going to do on the, above the commercial building.
All right. Rocco?
Well, I have to echo what Ben said and what I've said in, in the previous meetings. I, I would like to see this project go forward. I've been in those apartments. I have friends who live there. I've been into the, the rooms there, in the building, and in the terraces outside. And, and it's quite nice. As long as we can get these loose ends tied up, and it always, it always seems we're talking about the same thing every time. So I would, I ended, I would encourage you to get it going.
Yep. Keep working with the, with Kristen and other town. Bob?
Yeah, at this point, I don't have any questions or comments.
All right. Thanks. Joan?
I agree with Ben and Rocco. It looks like a great project, and I want to see it move forward expeditiously. And I'm hopeful that that's going to happen soon.
Yep. And Ahmed?
Let's catch up with the city. Move it forward. Thank you.
All right. And I think it's all been said. Same thing here. You're looking to the trash issue. And I did have a question on the, I saw an emergency access on the plan to the north, to the, toward the rowing association. How does that, there's a little bit of a grading issue there, too. Is that going to be like retractable bollards or something, or how's that emergency access going to be set up?
We'll provide it to the edge of our property if we can provide bollards, or whatever they prefer. I don't think they wanted bollards. But Dominic, how have we designed that?
We, I, I think we showed that those, they're knockdown bollards, so they could drive through them or remove them, depending on what they wanted. We didn't really set a particular style there, but there will be some kind of access. So, you know, if they, a pedestrian could walk by, but a vehicle couldn't else, otherwise, emergency vehicle.
Okay, so something that, so our.
Right. Part of the problem is, is we're not sure what Hudson River Rowing Association plans, if anything, for their property. And so it's hard for us to design a permanently, this emergency access. So it's, it's really for future design. We provide it for it, we'll allow it, but that needs to be addressed on the other side of the fence.
I mean, it just, just to note, if anybody hasn't picked up the detail, the detail for that road, it's a stone-based road with topsoil on the top of it for now. So it'll look like a grass area.
Yep.
But when in fact, it does make a hard connection to a property next door that may get developed in a hard road to go in, basically, the grass can be brought up and either pavement or brickstone or something put down on top of the stone. So it'll carry a, a, a firetruck vehicle, but it will still look like grass. So we're maintaining the green space. So if it never happens, it'll look like a grass lawn area that'll be mowed.
So in the interim, Dom, in the interim, I guess, it's not really an emergency access, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's a potential emergency access in the future, but it's not really one today, or when you open.
Yes, mainly because of, like you mentioned, the grade. There's a grade change there and without, we can't develop somebody else's property to make that happen, but we're providing the access for the future.
Okay.
And I believe I've changed it on the plans. It's called a future emergency connection. So not, but, but the access we're building will be suitable for a truck to carry over. So we wouldn't have to reconstruct anything.
Okay, so we'll be all prepped.
Yes.
Sounds good.
And this is Kristen. I just wanted to follow up. So this road and this discussion about the emergency or future connection actually transpired from a conversation with the Fairview Fire District. So we're actually going to follow up with them specifically about this, to make sure that they're aware about it, aware of it, and, you know, its potential future connection to the property to the north. And in addition to that, based on the comments we heard this evening, we'll confirm that if there's any treatment that they also want in addition, please, we'll get that to the applicant as well.
Yeah, it sounds like they're prepping it for the, the weight of a firetruck.
Yeah.
Such, so that's goodness. All right. Ready for motion today?
I move that the planning board defer action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments and writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following 1 through 12.
Second.
Second.
Does that include our comments tonight?
It does.
Okay. And, right. Moved, moved and seconded. Call to question by roll call vote. Ben?
Aye.
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven zero. All right, got a lot further along, so let's button up the last loose end.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. See you next meeting.
Take care, Liz. And Carol, I think, dropping off at this point as well. She hasn't already. It's a little tougher not being in person here.
Yes, yes.
Hopefully we'll get back to that at some point sooner than later. All right, next up is Lakeview Maxi Storage amended site plan. I'm just here representing Lakeview tonight.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Scott Ryan and I'm the owner of this project. I have with me tonight Rich Renia from Renia Engineering Design, who will continue with the presentation tonight. With that, I'll turn it over to Rich.
Good evening, everybody. We were at your last meeting, we went through the background on this project. It's Lakeview Maxi Storage is the name of the site located at Sixteen Creek Road. It was originally approved back in two thousand four as a contractor's yard. Then it was looked at being a plaza back in two thousand eleven and two thousand ten timeframe, but then it'd be, it received its site plan or site plan for the storage facility back in two thousand thirteen. It was originally proposed to have four buildings, two of which have been built already, and what we're proposing now is an amended site plan to take the buildings three and four and slightly elongate those buildings. At the end of the day, the building number three increases by twelve hundred and eighty square feet and building number four increases by three hundred and sixty square foot. Basically what it allows is two additional storage bays in each of the buildings. And I believe at the last meeting, the general discussion was about how we calculated the limit of disturbance and showing some more details on the plan so that the engineering review could be completed. We made a revised submission and I think we've addressed the majority of those comments.
All right, thanks. I'll go to Eric for department's recommendation.
We think that with a review by staff and engineer, the project may be ready to move forward if the board is inclined. The actions for the board, in this case for the site plan, first there would need, there's a public hearing advertised for tonight. There is also, it was, then there's also the secret environmental review. The board had determined this to be an uncoordinated action, and in fact, the zoning board, I understand, did approve all of the variances that would be needed for this project last Monday. And then the board could then consider special use permit and site plan that's required for the storage use, as shown on the plans. The, the questions regarding disturbance really revolved around whether or not, it's a tight site and revolves around whether or not the additional development would trigger the need for a SWIP, which would admittedly result in, in a lot more disturbance to handle the stormwater. And so I think our engineers found a, a way around that. There's been a lot of activity on the site in the last couple of years, and so he's proposed that, as shown on the plans, it could move forward if the limits of shown, shown on the plans are, are provided on the site before proceeding, and that would, that would appear to allow things to move forward as the applicant desires without a SWIP. And I'll let Rodney speak to that in a, in a moment. I guess the only other thing I was going to point out was the, there was a comment in here, our comment six B on, I'm sorry, comment five is no longer needed because the ZBA has acted on the variances. And six B, the, the intent of that was for no exterior storage except a shop. A slight change there. And I think that's pretty much it. The board's welcome to discuss, and we'll see. Rodney, do you have some additional comments?
I don't think so, Eric. The, the applicant has done, he's provided the limits of disturbance and has to live within them, so we, I think we're, I think we're willing to accept that based on what Rich Renia is saying. So the idea is that they stake out the limited disturbance that they proposed on their plan, they renovate, they actually go behind that, clean up the area if, if it requires cleaning up behind it in downhill, renovate the soil, seed it, topsoil it, do whatever they need to do, and leave it untouched. So I think that's a good solution.
Thank you. And, oh, I would let, I'm sorry, Carl, I'll add one other thing. I had a discussion yesterday with the sewer superintendent, his comments on the application were to provide a drivable easement, and given the layout of the development of the property of the site, that may be fairly challenging, particularly given the applicant's limitations on, on, on creating more, you know, adding more disturbance to the site. So we could leave that comment in there, but he and the applicant are going to be in discussions about whether or not just providing an easement for potential future use might be, might be feasible or sufficient, and then that can be handled as a condition of approval going forward.
Okay, great. It's good to see that you're trying to avoid the SWIP there. Andy, do you have any further comments on that? It's Rod. Oh, Rod.
No further comments.
Okay, yeah, that's right. All right. I just had a, yeah, it's good that you got the ZBA variances approved. So this is on for public hearings. Should I move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Anyone on the call tonight wish to comment on this project?
As we discussed previously, you may raise your hand if you're on Zoom or just unmute yourself. We do have fewer people on the call now, so that would work quite well. Star six if you're on a phone. And I'm not seeing any.
Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right, now we'll go around for comments. Ben?
Nothing.
Nicole?
My only comment was the building department had mentioned that building four may possibly need, that, that exterior wall may possibly need a fire rating, so I just wanted to know, did, did we have any further information on that or, or the client, did they talk to the building department about that?
We, we saw the, that note from Tim Sicles, and the, what I'd like to, I guess, point out to the, to the board is, we didn't think that that would, would be an issue because the, the buildings themselves are all metal buildings, so in essence, the, the building is fireproof, but we can just further discuss that, and I think that can get solved when the set of plans is submitted for the building permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, and I'll note, you got the variance for that setback anyway there, right? Anything from you, Rocco?
Nothing.
Bob?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Joan?
All right, no, nothing from me either.
All right, and Ahmed?
Nothing here.
All right. Same here, I think I said what I was going to say before. So we're ready for motion.
Carl, before you proceed with the motion, just to resolve for the record, secret comment number two had to do with a change to the EAF that, that said that the site will be discharging across other properties, and I, I think the, I've been, it's been explained to me what that means, but just because it's on the record, I guess I'd like to have either the applicant or the consulting engineer address that question.
Sure. The, typically, stormwater has to go someplace, so this site discharges to the back of the slate. When, when you enter in from the entrance driveway, this site slopes from the front to the rear, so in essence, ultimately, we look at where the stormwater ultimately goes. We're spreading it out, we're capturing it, and then we're spreading it back out, putting it so it would be overland flow, sheet flow back onto the ground, but it ultimately runs where it, it naturally ran. It always would run in that same direction, but it does run onto the next property.
Thank you.
All right, and there's, so the quantity of that, it's not going to be an issue? You said you're spreading it?
Correct, correct. We have a, a, a spreader, it's a rock device that the water drops into and then it re-spreads it back out, so we have sheet flow. So it's not channelized flow.
We concur.
Okay, thanks, Rod. I want to make sure there's no erosion going on there. All right, now we're ready for motion.
I move that the planning board as an involved agency for an uncoordinated seeker review hereby determines that the Lakeview Maxi Storage Special Use Permit and amended site plan will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the seeker negative declaration for an unlisted action dated April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second. Moved and seconded, call to question by roll call vote. Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional special use permit approval and conditional amended site plan approval for the Lakeview Maxi Storage application subject to the following. Respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included but not limited to the following one through eight.
Second. Moved and seconded for conditional approval. Call to question by roll call vote. Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven zero. Are you prepared to show us anything from an architectural standpoint on these buildings?
We did not have that this evening, but I can let the owner, Scott, speak to that. The, in essence, what he's doing is that the buildings are going to have the same exact look as you had previously approved.
That is correct. Nothing is changing with the appearance of those buildings, other than just being a little bit longer. And two buildings up along Creek Road, I think for the members of the board that have visited the site, you know, they're pretty clear to see what they look like.
Yep, so they'll be identical to those two buildings in coloring and-
Absolutely identical.
All right, with that in mind, I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call those, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right, thanks, good luck with the construction.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank the board and the staff. Thank you very much. Good night.
All right, next up is nine hundred Duchess Turnpike AP Packaging. Been hanging in there for a while, thanks for your patience. Who's representing AP Packaging tonight?
Hi, sorry, I couldn't hear you. This is Kelly Leibel with KRC Planning.
Ken Kazaminto from LRC, how are you?
Hey, guys. Can hear you better this, this time so far.
Excuse me?
Last, last meeting, you, you were really bad breaking up on the Zoom.
Oh, oh, yeah, we switched offices, so hopefully this is better.
Yep, loud and clear at the moment. All right, go ahead.
Very well, thank you.
Go ahead with the modifications you've done and-
I can't hear him. Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear, we, it was hard for us to hear you.
I was saying, going ahead, if you have anything to present?
Yes, we do. Is it okay if I share my screen, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Kelly.
Okay. Okay, this is a public hearing, so if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I'll just go through the project from the beginning to the end.
Yep, it'd be good to go overview since some people may not have seen it.
Very well. Ken and I are here tonight, we're representing the applicant, which is AP Packaging. The project location is nine hundred Duchess Turnpike. For all of us who are Poughkeepsie residents, I think we call this the former Alpha LaValle Building or the former De LaValle Building. The company AP Packaging is a manufacturer of bubble wrap, and we're excited to announce that they are planning a relocation of their entire facility from Lyndon, New Jersey to Poughkeepsie, New York. The parcel, the subject parcel is approximately fifty-eight acres. It's very deceiving when you look at it from forty-four. It's in the IH zoning district. Access is from the existing Route forty-four, which is also called Duchess Turnpike, and Victory Lane, which is at the signalized intersection. The site is serviced by municipal water, and it's also serviced by a private onsite sewer treatment plant. We did provide you with a site plan, and there's a lot on this plan, so I broke it up into separate little sections, but for purposes of the discussion today, this is just a blow up of the project area. So the project area that we're really focusing on is the east side of the property, which is adjacent to Victory Lane, and directly opposite of us is the Eastdale project, so just to give you some orientation. So the project area that we're talking about is this hatched area next to the building. The property overall is proposing some minimal changes. This was considered a type-two action. The activities are primarily related to the installation of twelve new loading docks and some new channelization along Victory Lane. So this section of the site plan shows the new proposed trees that we are suggesting, again on this lower map, just along Victory Lane. And the purpose of this is to close these parking lots that are right now have open curb cuts, and we want to create a continuous strip of landscaping there, and this area is then primarily going to be focused on utilizing, or utilized by the truck delivery vehicles. And so for purposes of channelization, we're proposing a little landscaped island here and the installation of four new red maple trees. In addition, we're proposing some new pedestrian improvements, so on the aerial photograph, we're looking at this area here where there's an existing sidewalk, and we're proposing a new sidewalk connection, although not shown on this plan, this is primarily where the new Eastdale road connection is going to be, and it's a complicated turning movement. That blow up is right here. Because you'll have vehicles coming in and out from Eastdale, you'll have vehicles coming in and out on Victory Lane, and vehicles coming in and out of this parking area, it's really a three-way intersection with a pedestrian crossing. So we are proposing the removal of an existing speed hump that is located generally in this area, and the replacement of a new speed pump and a pedestrian crossing, new signage and new striping, just to try to improve the overall circulation and traffic circulation in that area. In addition, we're proposing to make an improvement to the existing dumpster enclosure so that it's compliant with the Town of Poughkeepsie dumpster enclosure requirements. And the applicant is proposing the addition of twelve new loading areas, so this just provides you with an elevation of what you're looking at. If you were standing at Eastdale, looking west towards this project, it would be to the right of the building. Again, this is just a blow up. I know there's a lot on this drawing, so I was just trying to blow this up for you. What we're envisioning is the delivery vehicles will come into the site, they'll back into the loading areas, and then they'll pull back out and then travel back around through the site and back on to forty-four Duchess Turnpike. This just gives you some images of what that existing space looks like now. There are two existing garage doors here, and the balance of the doors will be to the right of those existing structures. With respect to parking, we actually calculated the parking incorrectly at the last meeting, and thank you, Eric, for finding my calculation error. If you calculate- Um, if you calculate at full buildout, the full building would require 754, uh, parking spaces, and we're proposing 405. And I have been in and out of this facility many, many times over the last few months, and this site is significantly underparked. Um, and so Eric and I had a discussion one day about how to articulate this to you so that we could express to you how underparked this site is. Um, so what I did is we went out in the morning, um, I was on-site between 7:00 and 8:00 AM, and I drove around and counted, it was impossible for me to count the open parking spaces because there were so many of them, so alternatively, I just counted the number of vehicles that were parked. And, um, predominantly, most of the parking is in the front, um, here, which on this drawing, this would be 44. This is Victory Lane, and in the front, the reason that there's so many, um, cars parked there is because that's where Bosse's is using the space while their property is under construction. So we saw bus, um, uh, pickups and drop-offs between, uh, 7:30 and 8:00 AM. And again, this is predominantly where you see most cars. You know, in this area, there were nine cars and two buses. These were definitely buses that were overflowed, that had dropped off, um, children into the school and were just sitting and, and communicating and talking. In this area, 14 cars and one truck, five cars over here, and in this parking lot, there were 11 cars and two trucks. So again, it's significantly underparked. This screen looks pretty bleak because our counting, um, of vehicles was actually pretty bleak. Again, I tried to articulate to Eric that when I sat at the site one day, it's, um, it's actually a little unfortunate that the site is so underutilized, and we're hoping that this is a significant improvement for this building. But between the hours of 7:30 and 8:00 AM, there were 51 incoming cars. And most of those were really going to Bosse's and parking in the front and walking in, and there were 13 school buses. So the residual cars were people who were coming essentially to work. There were a few cars, um, trucks, that we called cars that were picking up, um, at ABC. And, um, and that was it. As far as the space is concerned, um, just to give you a perspective of what space AP Packaging is going to be utilizing initially, it's the area that's inside of the red. So this area will be retrofitted to, um, accept their manufacturing, uh, process and their office staff. As, um, Bosse's moves out, which is in this area in the green, they're hoping that they can move into that space and continue to expand. Um, inside of the space, there continues to be main common corridors that will bring, um, the new staff that will be working here to the front doors, so they'll have access to the sidewalks and then pedestrian connections throughout the building. As far as the lighting is concerned, there is existing lighting at the site, so we have not shown new lighting on the property and on the project. Um, I went out and took photos, which I'll show you later, but these are essentially LEDs, they're adjustable. They really just point down, um, at the parking lot at the moment, but they can be adjusted. I went out at night, one night, and took photos just to give you an idea, and you can see the way these lights shine, they pretty much shine directly down to illuminate the area, um, immediately underneath there, which is really ideal for, um, parking and loading. Again, this is just a side view, so you could see the, um, photometrics of the lighting, and then this is standing against the building, looking out toward Eastdale. Um, this is a public hearing, so we did want to provide you with the affidavit so you could see that this was certified and it had been, um, published in the Poughkeepsie Journal Building, or in the Poughkeepsie Journal. And that is it, if you have any questions.
All right, thanks. So, I would just, so you, you indicated is Bosse's is going to be, is going to be leaving, you're saying?
Well, Bosse's is temporarily in that place while their site over on Soul Point Turnpike is under construction.
Oh, is that what, okay.
And I think that they're, um, experiencing some delays, and, uh, I, I think that it was expected that they would probably be in the new space, uh, sooner, but they're still in this existing space.
Right, I knew they were doing, uh, uh, the big additions over there or something, so...
Interestingly enough, one of the programs that they're promoting is a new manufacturing program, which I didn't know, um, which is great for this tenant, and, um, hopefully they'll be able to pull interns and, you know, really try to attract people, um, as they grow in this area.
Okay, so that whole front space will be available to this new, to AP Packaging once they move out?
Yes, as, when they leave, yes, yep.
All right, we go to Eric for his, uh, comments then.
Sure. Uh, thanks, Kelly, for the, I think your information, uh, submitted, and tonight will fill in the gaps. Um, can you, some of the information that you showed in that PowerPoint was new, can you provide that to Carol tomorrow for, as a, for the record?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Great, so, uh, we're recommending that the board, if there's no seeker environmental review for this, it's a type-two action. Um, we're recommending that the board move ahead. Uh, the only outstanding issue I think could be handled is conditions of approval. Uh, the consultants expressed some concern about the truck maneuvering. Um, and our observation was that, that however, there may be some conflicts that prevent full use of the, um, full use of the docks, uh, but since they're showing that area on their site and not, not extending into Victory Lane as a, as a loading area or a maneuvering area other than for access, um, we think it can be handled as conditions of approval. Uh, but the board might want to, I'll let the consultants speak to that, and the board may want to get some feedback.
Yep.
And otherwise, we have a, uh, a resolution.
All right, thanks, Eric, uh, Andy, uh, you first?
Okay, um, yeah, so as Eric mentioned, our, our primary, most of our comments are related to truck maneuvering. Um, I think Mark will, will have some similar comments, but I, um, one of our primary comments was that some of the maneuvering movements indicated, uh, it, it raises a question of whether or not they'll be able to get trucks in with another trailer on an adjacent bay, um, without encroaching on parking or, or, or into Victory Lane. Um, again, I think it can be resolved, um, but, uh, just maybe some additional, um, movement plans or revisions to plans may be necessary to, to clarify that. The, uh, we also, they're, they're proposing some changes to the, um, the, the curb island along Victory Lane. We were looking for some details on that, again, nothing that could be a condition of approval. And then, I guess I will just comment on the, on the, on the photos that, that Kelly shared, um, for the lighting. The fixtures may need to be adjusted a little bit because, uh, although the lighting appeared to be adequate in terms of illumination levels, I think that does technically meet the, the, the definition of glare, um, off-site. Um, so the board may need to, we may need to look at just adjusting those light fixtures a little bit.
Some kind of shield on them perhaps?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thanks, Andy, Mark, more about the trucks?
Yeah, so our primary focus, our, our bigger comments was, again, related to trucks, as Andy had mentioned. A lot of our other comments are site plan-related items that could be conditions of approval. Um, so we have, um, when we were looking at it, we were just concerned if there's a truck in one of the loading bays, uh, already, even if it's not just, if it's just a trailer, um, it could be difficult for the truck to, uh, back into one of those other, either adjacent or other bays there. Looking at Kelly's, um, uh, photo that she provided of the rendering of the truck in the loading bay, it looks like there was a trailer that was stationary there without the tractor, so, you know, I'm just, we're just wondering if that's the case, uh, if that's going to be going here, and how does that maneuvering work, uh, with, uh, a trailer or a truck and trailer occupied in one of those spaces as it's shown to encroach over those potential areas in the truck maneuvering? Um, also just to show the, the truck utilizing the full, uh, circulation path that's being proposed, where it goes all the way around the building, again, that's something that we're just looking for, for there. But the other items are all site-related, um, corrections that could be done as condition of approval.
All right, thanks, Mark. Do you have any comments at this time on those, on the truck conflicts, Kelly?
No, I think, um, they're all items that we can, we can resolve, Ken is here as well, so I think that we can resolve all of them with Mark and with Andy.
Yeah, we'll take a look at them and, and rerun some maneuvers and get them over to them so they can, uh, you know, if we, like Andy said, if we have to make some minor site adjustments to, uh, make it accommodate, we'll, we'll work it out. I think we can make it work.
All right, thanks, Ken. All right, this is on for a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Anyone in the audience tonight wish to comment on AP Packaging?
I was just curious what their hours of operation would be.
I believe at this time that they're going to be, um, a 24-hour operation six days a week, but they anticipate that their, um, trucks will, about 15 vehicles a day, and between the hours of 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM.
Daytime truck traffic, okay. Any, any further? Anybody else wish to speak?
For the record, that was, uh, Alan Resnick. Um, I just noticed that he also put that question in the chat, so, there we go, okay. All right, so we got that, um, any, anyone else? Don't think so, okay.
All right, seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right, go around the board for comments, uh, start with Ben.
Uh, I brought it up last time, and I think the, the people should know for the public, at least for the record, that this is not a plastics extruding, extruding plant, so there's no odors or waste or anything like that. So it's just making bubble wrap.
Yep.
And that's good, thank you.
Yeah, I think that, that their process had to heat it up, uh, to the point where, where it's not going to be a, uh, an odor. All right, uh, Nicole? Eddie?
Uh, there was a question on the pedestrian connections. Uh, I think Eric, you had initially brought it up, um, between the south side of the building and the existing front sidewalk. I guess it looks like they would have to walk through the school in order to, to get out of the building, so I just wanted to, to ask that question, is that correct, or?
There's actually, um, common hallways, I can share my screen again real quick if that's okay, and I can show you.
Yeah.
There's actually common hallways between the, uh, space. Oops, a little bit too fast there.
One pass, there's...
There it is. Um, so this is the site that is generally, you know, the area that's generally going to be used by AP Packaging. They're working with, um, the Office of Liscom McCormick Van Voorhees to retrofit this space. The pink areas or maroon, whatever you want to, uh, call them, are common hallways that will take, um, anyone who's in these offices up to the front, so they'll have access to the front doors and to the sidewalk. Um, so those common areas will remain for the, um, other tenants in the space and for the office staff of AP Packaging. So predominantly, their office staff will be on this side, which in this picture is really in the yellow space, and then in the purple and the pink will be where they do their manufacturing and their logistics. So rather than...
And where is the, and the school is what, here in the green?
Oh, the school, yeah, this is Bosse's, is all of this green. There's a small area that's used by an auction place, but we just generally colored this green, um, but that's where they are right now.
Okay.
So, but, but...
And I can...
So Bosse's is...
Go ahead, would, I didn't hear that, what did you say? Kelly, what did you say?
Kelly?
Think she's frozen.
Oh, oops.
Uh-oh.
I mean, at this point, Bosse's is there, but that's temporary, so it sounds like there's common hallways, so it's...
The, uh, there's Eric, and I'll, I'll just mention, uh, it's up, up to the board, the thought was that it's a change of use for that portion of the building. I know Bosse's is, is a secure facility, I wasn't sure the extent of the connections. Uh, Mike actually had suggested at the last meeting that a pedestrian connection, um, would be a good idea. And I thought particularly with the, one of the changes is that the trucks are going to be having to circle the building. It doesn't sound like it's a big deal right now. If the board wanted to take it up with a future tenant, that would be fine, but it seems like they're already doing some sidewalk work in the crosswalk connection to Eastdale. It looks like it might be some crosswalk paint in another small section of sidewalk so that not only this tenant, but all of the other tenants in the building, um, to the east of, of where AP Packaging is going, they have entrances on the south as, as well. And so as long as Bosse's is there, and as long as any of the other tenant spaces are in use, there's no way to really, there's no safe way to access that walkway, cut presently, uh, unless there's a connection created, and it seems like a small measure. But if the board wants to hold off, that's okay too.
Well, she sounded, she sounded like they have access through a common hallway in the, uh...
Well, Bosse's is secure, so as long, it's not, it's not available as long as, uh, Bosse's is there. After Bosse's is gone, it, it might well become...
Well, that's not what she told us, I, she, it, my, what I understood was that there is a common hallway space, maybe, uh, uh, I guess why don't we handle this
Yeah.
as a condition and with further clarification, you know, we can make a, a logical choice on that, was that...
Yeah, I guess if they, if they can't walk through there to get to the front door sidewalk, then, then I would want to see that.
Right.
That sidewalk put in, but...
Get back.
I think they ought to back.
All right.
Oh, hey, Kelly.
I am so sorry, I don't know what is wrong with this place, but we just lost internet connection in the middle of that presentation. So I'm hoping that you've got my, my explanation, Nicole, I'm sorry.
We, we did not get this fully, I mean, we were trying to understand if people can transition through the Bosse's area to the front door currently while Bosse's is there. Or do they...
They can.
There's a common hallway within the building that does not...
Okay.
Okay, so then that would seem to indicate that the additional sidewalk is probably not necessary. Is that a, so when, when Bosse's is there, they have, uh, they, they have the ability to keep people out of their facility, but still, they can still use that hallway, is that how that works?
Yeah, it's like a, it's a multi-tenanted building right now, so there's common hallways. So this is the, you know, the, the pink maroon areas here. These are the common hallways, so, um, this is where predominantly the staff for AP Packaging will be, and this maroon hallway will stay, which is a common hallway, and they'll be able to come out to this main door and access the sidewalk system.
Oh, okay.
Oh, good.
So that makes sense, all right, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Although that, although that main door doesn't have the sidewalk.
Um, it actually, it connects, the sidewalk is right, it goes across the front of the whole property.
It, there's a missing piece, uh, at least on the aerial I see here that... There's no connection piece between the two front doors there.
So this is the front door that they would come out, and there is a system here, and then it crosses over, and then this is where we're creating the new sidewalk system. So here's this, here's the sidewalk.
Okay, I just wasn't zoomed in enough, it's, it's, it's just not lined up with the other piece of sidewalk, it's just...
Correct, but there is a sidewalk here, so you can walk from one to the other.
All right, thanks, Kelly.
You're welcome.
All right, move on, now, let's see, who, Rocco, any comments?
Uh, no, I think, uh, everything, I, I think, I think they've answered my question from last time, thank you.
Bob?
Um, question, how, how long will, um, Bosse's and AP Packaging coexist?
I, I don't know the answer to that, I think a lot of that is predicated on the construction that's going on at Bosse's, and they did, you know, there were some, some, um, setbacks at Bosse's, so I don't know when they're anticipated to move out.
But you think it's just sometimes...
Is that creating, uh, any kind of problems right now, or is it just inconvenient?
I think it's just inconvenient, you know, as that space becomes available to them and they can expand into it. But for now, um, we're working with Mike McCormick's office, and we're laying out the logistics of that interior space to accept the equipment. They're bringing about $2.8 million worth of equipment from New Jersey up here. And so it's kind of a cool, fun, new thing to do, you know, to do that interior space and do a fit-up for a manufacturing facility versus, you know, commercial offices. So it's pretty, pretty interesting, but we're working with the existing space that we have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That'll be great for the town. Let's see. Jo- John, do you have anything?
I don't, I have no, uh, comments, thank you.
And Ahmed?
I have one question, which, I mean, I got excited about the manufacturing coming to Poughkeepsie. to the city, but at the same time, I started reading about it, and for the plastic, the concern for a lot of the other towns is the fallout from the trucks that litter the streets and then end up into rivers and creeks and that sort of thing, so I'm not sure if that's pertaining to you, how secure the transport of the crates or on the trucks, because that's what's been reported in Delaware, Virginia, where these plastic manufacturers are.
So that's...
So, the materials come in as, they're not composite materials that are mixed in place, so they come in in big rolls of plastic, and then it's more of a, a, less of a manufacturing or more of an assembly, so the materials are turned into the bubble wrap on site and then shipped back out. It's my understanding that there is very, very little waste, anything that is disposed of is the office garbage, any waste inside of the manufacturing facility is recycled and reused, and all of the materials are shipped out in bulk, so they're prepackaged on pallets and wrapped.
Actually, my concern is not the waste from the manufacturing, it's the latter that you said, it's the pallets, they reported that pallets fall off the truck and litter the streets.
Oh, these are...
And nobody attended them, and so there's some lack of attention to the loading of these pallets, that they end up with making turns and that sort of thing, a truck lose one or two pallets along the way, and then they start, keep moving.
I'm not sure how to answer that, the trucks, it's my understanding that these trucks are enclosed, they're not, I think, more of an, you're thinking of maybe an open truck, like a flatbed type truck that has pallets on it, so it's my understanding that they're enclosed, I can't assure you that they're enclosed, but it's my understanding that they're enclosed, and I think that would be a systemic problem to kind of any delivery vehicle regardless of whether it's here or, you know, at Eastdale for that matters, but I, I'm not sure how to answer that or to address that.
I, like I said, it came up in my research, that as one of the main concerns for environmental concern with these plastics and the transportation of it, so
Okay.
I would appreciate that, their attention base to that, so we don't end up with pallets on Route 44 or wherever.
I understand that, yes, I agree with that also.
So maybe just confirm they're closed trucks, that, that it would not be...
Okay, I can ask them.
Anything spilling out, that'll be great. All right, thanks, Ahmed. Myself, I think you answered my question about how many trucks per day and the hours, and, so I'm good. Do a motion, Nicole?
Move.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for the 900 Just Turnpike AP Packaging Site Plan subject to the following. Respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included but not limited to the following, ones through 10.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote, Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. And Kelly?
Thank you.
Yeah, we want to do architectural review on the end of the, the building there, it's mainly the truck.
Sure, we, we don't have the colors and materials because we are simply just putting new garage doors into the existing space, so the garage doors will be the same color and materials of the existing facility.
Okay, yeah, it's kind of one color on top, red on top, and...
Yeah, we're not going to change the exterior of the side, it'll still be the tan with the maroon, and we'll just replicate the doors in the exact same colors that you see on this plan.
Sounds good. Any, any comments from board members? And you were going to look into if those lights needed to have some shielding on them?
I will.
Because there will be traffic coming in and out of Eastdale quite a bit, I would imagine.
Yes, I would agree.
All right, I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote, Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Motion, and myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. Glad to see it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Glad to see the company coming to the area and taking up this space and some new local jobs as well, so...
Yes, it is very exciting, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Wish them luck and take care.
Will do, hopefully we can get a tour when they open.
That would be nice.
That'd be nice.
All right, we've got a couple adjournments here to work through. South Hills Commons, I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to May 20th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Department of Corrections and Community Supervision, I move that public hearing be adjourned to May 20th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Stewart Shop at 2245 South Road, I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to May 20th, 2021. Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up Arlington Farms, I move that the planning board, the public hearing be adjourned to May 20th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. At this time, I'll, I'll move that, to allow public comment at any other agenda items, please leave your comments in no more than three minutes. Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up on the agenda is Eastdale Village.
Wait, wait, is there anyone who wants to...
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Right, is there anyone who wants to provide comments on anything left on the agenda?
Too late, too late. It's past 8:30, huh? No comments allowed. Any, anyone have comments on any board, on the, any additional agenda items?
And this is for the public, not for board members.
Yes.
Just to clarify. Helping you out, Carl.
It's getting late.
Yep. All right, I'm not seeing any hands raised or anybody trying to unmute themselves, I think we're probably safe to, to go.
All right, and we'll re, we'll re resume the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We're back in, back on board with Eastdale Village 12th Site Plan Amendment. Hey Jeff, been hanging in there a while?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, board, how are you?
All right, okay.
Well, thanks for having us back on this evening to talk about the Darrow Place Connector, which I think is the, really the subject of why we're, why we're here. If I could, I'd like to, to share my screen, Mr. Chairman, is that okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. So, this is, again, just to, just to refresh a little bit on, on our issue here, this is the, the east side of the development, 44 is across the top. Eastdale Avenue South runs down the, the middle of the project, and so this upper section here is really the commercial core, and the residential section is, is the remaining pieces of it. Darrow Place is here off the, off the edge of the, or off the edge of the, of the map, and the proposed connector runs in between Darrow Place and Parkside Drive, Parkside Drive is, ends up in a right-only exit from Eastdale onto, onto Route 44. So, the, the issue of timing with Darrow Place Connector really relates to two items. One is, we have to have a functional sewer system to be able to make the connection, and two, we have to make sure we can build safely around any, any vehicles using the Darrow Place Connector. Let me, uh, jump ahead a little bit, this is a blow-up of the Darrow Place Connector, and again, Parkside Drive is along the edge here, this is the connector, and this is, this is Darrow Place, so there are a couple of features that are, that are, that are important here. In green here is the sewer line, this area here is the septic field for the Phillips property, and this is a, a gravel pad that we're required to build for the, for Phillips. So, the, you know, this road is very close to Building 15, which is again, the, one of the, the townhouse units, is one of the issues that, that sets a concern here. So, to build, to have this sewer operational, and I'll go back up to the top of the, the drawing, all of this site drains by gravity down to a pump station here, and then is pumped back up through the site across 44 and ties into the town system at the bottom of Concord Village Drive, is pumped over the hill from Concord Village and lands at Van Wagner and flows into, into Tramuni, I'm sorry, into the, into the Arlington, into the Arlington Plant. So, the flow from just the single home, the Phillips home, isn't enough for this pump station to really operate, it needed more flow. This was one of the, the, the beginning conversations that we had with, with, with staff and consultants at the town as we started this, so we know we needed more flow than just a single family home for this pump station to actually have enough flow to be operational, so we knew, always knew we had to build at least one of these houses to make, that's right, these apartment buildings to make it, to make it work.
Yep.
So then, the second issue was, how do we build this site out safely, and how do we, how do we really kind of, kind of get the logistics of, of the construction here? And, this is the, the, goes through the various phases of construction, this is the first building in the, in the, the pitch here, under construction, this is the building 18. And, you know, how these buildings are fed, construction-wise, is important. Our construction trailer for the east side is up, is up here in this, in this portion of the, of the site, this will be, we think this will be the last area built out, and then, this is, you know, staging area, employed parking, so this is kind of our, our major area to get materials and people down to the, down to the construction, so in Building 18, we really can, can access it really in, in, in every direction, because even Eastdale Avenue won't be operational at that point in time, so that's, so that's easy. We go to the next phase, so then we build Building 17, what happens is we build in the middle and then work our way out of the project, so we're not driving by, not bringing material by a buil, building as we build the next one, so this is again, the next building, so how do we build this building? Again, the main flow of traffic comes, of, of construction vehicles comes down this way, and, and this building is, is constructed. Again, the building 16 is the next one, same kind of, same kind of idea, we're coming down Parkside Drive, Building 16, and then, and, and recognize that we have a flow of materials and people coming right in front of Building 15, so from a safety perspective, we needed to leave this corridor open as we're building, building these buildings, and then once we get to Building 15, then it's, then it's, that's, that's built, that's out of the way, and we're going to just pull the, pull the construction rest of the way out and build, build the rest of these buildings in order as we, as we come up Parkside Drive, so 15, 14, 13, 12, and the, and the Ortega House built last. So, when we, well, and again, it's, 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 this area that becomes the, you know, this is the, the most concerning area from our construction safety perspective, that's all being fed from the, from the, from the staging areas up here in the, in this open section of the, of the site. So, when we last talked, uh, we expect the construction of Building 15 to take place in the summer of 2023, starting in the spring of 2023, and, I'm sorry, 2022. Lost the year already, starting in 2022, and be done sometime in the, in the late fall. And then, we would build, and we said, well, then we'd build the connector road after that, and the connector road would be open in the spring of, of 2023. We were asked by the board to go take a, take a look, is there, is there a different way to do that, is a better way to do that, to get the building, get that road open, open quicker, and so we went back and looked at it, and, and we believe we can build this, this connector road, and as long as we have the sewer running and, and Building 18 operational, we can build the connector road in the, in the spring and summer of 2022 and have it paved, won't have to, because we were, the concern was, we couldn't pave the connector road until the next, the next spring, we can build that and have it paved, and then, but barricade it, not allowed to be in use while we're building Building 15, and then as soon as Building 15 is done, this can be open, and, and people can, can then access the, the roadway network to get out to either Eastdale Avenue or to, to Victory Lane. So that was the, that was again, the, the proposal, that to, to move that construction ahead as quick as we can, but barricade the, the entrance to the connector road until we get Building 15, you know, get it all done, get it all paved, have it all ready to go, so as soon as Building 15 is done and we have construction vehicles, you know, out here, out of here and out of here, that we can allow traffic safely to, to come onto the site.
Okay, that'll, so that'll potentially move it up to almost six months, potentially?
Yeah, the, the, yes, the idea is that we'll move it up about six months. Yeah, right, right, much quicker, and, and we're not, I guess the, the real speedup is that we're, we're no longer at the mercy of how wet is the spring going to be, we'll know we'll be able to get this, get this paved in the summer of, of, of 2022, so that it can be open just as soon as we get, get the construction finished on the, on Building 15.
Jeff, could you just address how the construct, the, the construction path you showed was coming out of the middle of that field? How is it getting there for Route 44?
So, the, for the, for the most part, we expect staff to be using, you know, the signalized access to come on, come onto the site here, and some materials will likely come up Victory Lane and, and, and come up, potentially crossing, crossing Eastdale Avenue, but we really, we really got to keep, the goal is to keep that construction out of this central residential core as much as possible, so we have some different opportunities to get people and materials into this, into this section using the, the, this, this network really as the, as the primary access point.
Jeff, this is Andy. You, you talk about Building 15, but also in that area is Building 14, can you talk about how your plan affects Building 14?
14 is a little, if I have a better blow-up here, 14 is a little further away from the connector road than 15, so it isn't, it isn't as pinched by building the, Building 15 as well, it's also, as you can see from the grades here on 15, 15's just a little more difficult to build, it's, it's, it's based on the hill, so 14 is, is an easier build, it's flatter around it, number one, and number two, I'll go back to, back to, back to this drawing, as we're, if we've... Let me just erase this, if we build 15... let me just uh, erase this. Um, if we build fifteen, again, the construction vehicles are now coming in here to build fourteen. Um, but the but this, because again, this is uh, this section of Parkside Drive isn't open, um, access down the connector road will will go this way to uh, to exit the site. So fourteen can be built without being impacted by traffic and without impacting traffic on the connector road or on uh, this section of Parkside Drive. And then once again, once fourteen is done, then then this, you know, this section of uh, of the roadway is open. And so people can go either this way you know, or this way to get uh, to get out of the site. And then we start to build these last uh, the last two townhouses. Does that, does that address your question, Andy?
It does, yes. Thank you.
Yeah, I was I was curious about that myself with fourteen being on the other side of the road. That's good. Thanks for explaining. Uh, okay, let me go to Eric for department's recommendation.
Yep. Um, yeah, so the staff recommendation, in this case, the the action before the board um, is is pretty simple. Uh, it's just whether and how uh, it might choose to amend the condition of the previous conditions of approval for the twelfth site plan amendment with regard to the Darrow Connector. And there's a resolution for that uh, in your in your packets. Um, and so we just pointed out the 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 tension of the original note was that uh, two buildings at the point of two buildings on the east side, that um, the Darrow Road Connector would be done. And that would amount to um, it was a hundred. Three hundred and sixty, after, the assumption is that building sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, three buildings would be done before they started fifteen, uh, which amounts to three hundred and six sixty-two units out of the three hundred and eighty uh, residential units um, on this, on the on the total site, uh, excluding the residential over commercial. Um, and then fifteen, the fif- building fifteen would be another twelve units after that. So the note was for after two buildings, which would be at about a hundred and fifty units less than that. Um, and as Jeff is proposing, it would be the three hundred and sixty-six. Um, and that that seems like it, like there's not too much choice. So there's a resolution for that. If you come up with something different, there's uh, room for conditions.
All right, thanks. We'll go around the board for if anybody's got any modifications to adjust proposal, but uh, looked pretty good to me. Start with uh, Andy, if he had any further comments. Andy, do you have anything on this one?
Sorry. Uh, no, I I I I agree. I think they've addressed the plan, um, a- addressed our comments um, based on the safety issues that have been raised and and the need to 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 provide adequate sewer flow to that new pump station. I I think this makes sense.
Mm-hmm. All right, let's go around for additional comments. Nicole?
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Ben?
No, it makes sense to me. You want to try to keep as much traffic out of the construction area as you can. So it looks good.
Ahmed?
I like the proposal of building their connection road ahead of time. That's good.
Yep, gets it done a little bit earlier. Uh, Joan?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Bob?
Just, you know, as usual, Jeff seems to have everything under control and has the right answers to all the questions. So we like having him around, but I do look forward to the day when you say this is our final site plan.
We we perhaps all though. Thank you.
When you run out of numbers, let's see. Uh, and Rocco?
No, all good here. Thank you.
I guess my only comment is, uh, what's that connector road gonna be named? Is that gonna be Kane Boulevard?
No chance of that.
All right. I don't know if, I don't know if officially it does have to have a name from a nine eleven, nine-one-one uh, emergency point of view, but.
Yeah, you know, there there are no um, there are no
Kind of like a driveway.
Buildings that would have access to that, that wouldn't need an address. Um, I don't know that it would require a a name. It's like some of the uh, it's like some of the parking lot connector drives on site and so many sites aren't named. I think this is just, it's just a, it's just a connector that's uh, that's that can be available.
Just like a driveway or something. Yep.
Right, right.
All right. Well, you can put up your own sign if you want.
I get a sign permit.
All right, right. All right, um, move forward with a a motion then.
I move that the planning board amend the three eighteen twenty-one conditions of site plan approval for the second, for the twelfth site plan amendment to provide for the con- construction of the Darrow Place Connector Road according to the MHTC's three thirty twenty-one proposal and to to authorize revision of title sheet note number twenty-eight, subject to staff review and approval, retaining all other three eighteen twenty-one conditions of approval.
Okay.
Moved and seconded, called the question by roll call vote. Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, I, motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Chairman, I I would note that Mr. Martin, the neighbor, has asked a question via chat, but uh, I'd be happy to address if that's okay.
Sure, I didn't see that yet. Thanks. And uh, thanks for addressing this to make it happen earlier.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Martin asked who will maintain the connector road, town or Eastdale? So go ahead, Jeff.
He, he, it's an easy answer. Eastdale is maintaining it.
Right.
Uh, I will, I will also add that um, uh, at the town's request, um, uh, the town has the right to maintain that, not an obligation to maintain it, the right to maintain that road. Uh, should Eastdale go out of business, you you have the, the town will then have the 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 rights to maintain that um, as long as as long as necessary. Um, at the, and then the town would charge Eastdale for the uh, for the maintenance that road. But we're really responsible for the maintenance.
All right, thanks. And you're welcome, Mr. Martin. All right.
Thank you all.
Great. Thanks, Jeff. Good luck with continued construction out there.
Thank you. We will see you soon.
When, you know, when uh, that, you, any any projection on when uh, Rossi's is coming in or the pizza place or?
Uh, this uh, the summer, uh, we should have a couple of uh, of new um, businesses opening up on Eastdale Avenue south there. So if you can see, if you you've been to buy there recently, you can see we've got a number of buildings uh, out of the uh, out of the ground. So we're gonna have a bunch of stuff going on uh, um, opening up fresh uh, this summer. It's be good.
Okay, great. Thanks, Jeff.
I was at Rossi's today. They ate there expecting September, he said. Carl.
All right, thanks, Ben. Sounds good. All right, good, good luck again and see you next time.
Thank you.
So Mr. Chair, David Cooper is actually able to attend the meeting for the Hudson Heritage. And since the only things after that are time extensions, I'm going to say good night unless I need to stick around for any reason. So don't all be jealous. I know you won't. Good night, everyone.
Thanks, Lisa. Thanks for hanging with you.
All right.
All right. Welcome to David.
David's on the night show.
Hi, guys. Yeah, I've been here all night. No, but but.
Right, Hudson Heritage.
We're early. Yeah, I had to put my tie back on. I thought I had another hour.
Hudson Heritage is up next on, for the resolution of subdivision approval amendment, so.
Yeah, David, you want to just quickly do the summary on this one?
This is the, I'm sorry, the um, the sewer or the uh?
Amended resolution for the sewer tenancy.
For the sewer, okay. So so um, we discussed quickly, but but uh, initially, when the planning board issued uh, um, subdivision approval and uh, well, well, final subdivision approval for the for the the development, um, you included a a condition that a C of O could be issued for only the grocery store on Lot Four and no other buildings anywhere in in development uh, until the sewer district is is um, in uh, late January or actually early February, the petition to form the Hudson Heritage Sewer District was um, forwarded uh, on to the controller's office, the office of state controller, um, because it's a, at this point, a considered a cost district, um, because there will be um, costs that will be charged back to the district uh, owners or Sabre at this point. Um, the controller's office needs to review. Um, and there is a a considerable backlog at the controller's office. And so the district is still under review in the state. Um, but the Hudson Heritage project is still moving forward. And so not only is the grocery store soon to be uh, online or about or able for C of O, but some of the other commercial uses on Lot Four will be uh, available to be opened. Um, what the uh, uh, owner, the applicant is asking is to amend the subdivision approval to allow um, additional users on Lot Four um, to connect into the sewer and have and have certificates of occupancy before the sewer district is is in place. Staff is recommending that 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 you take that action. Um, just so you know, a uh, sewer uh, tenancy agreement between uh, the applicants and the owner of the property and the town will be entered into before anybody is allowed to turn on the taps, whether it be for the grocery store or any of the other um, commercial uh, buildings. Um, so that uh, they, the owners will be paying for their usage of uh, the sewer uh, until such time as the uh, the district will be formed.
Till the district's formed?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, David. Uh, you have any comments on that, Andy?
Uh, not really. Uh, I could tell you that the water, the water, water line is is constructed and and has been activated. So that's that they are moving forward very quickly. They'll be ready for sewer very soon.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, I don't have any issue with it. Let me run a, run a, go around board quick to see if anybody has a concern. Ben?
No.
Nicole?
No.
Rocco?
Nope.
Bob?
No.
Joan?
No.
Ahmed?
Ahmed, you're muted.
I'm muted.
No.
No, you're concerned. That's that's fine. Uh, all right, um, we're ready for motion then.
I move the the planning board amend condition number four of the preliminary and conditional final major subdivision plot approval dated July sixteen twenty twenty in condition number three of the amended conditional final major subdivision approval dated August twenty 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 as follows. Formation of the sewer improvement district for the site is required prior to the town issuing any temporary or final certificates of occupancy for any building at the site in condition, in connection with the project, except that the applicant may obtain a temporary or a final certificate of occupancy for the supermarket and approximately thirty thousand two hundred square feet of the additional commercial, commercial space. On Lot Four, provided that until such time as the sewer district is formed, the owners of the lot shown on the amended final subdivision plot of section one filled with the county clerk shall be responsible to maintain the sewer service connection on Lot Four. And the trunk line under Winslow Gate Road and the applicant and the town enter into a sewer use or tenancy agreement in form and substance acceptable to the town attorney, pursuant to which the applicant shall be liable for the payment of all sewer charges based upon usage metered from the water meter on Lot Four. Any fees and assessments for capital improvements to the town sewer system on the same basis and to the extent as will be payable in the new sewer district once formed.
Okay.
Moved and seconded, called a question by roll call vote. Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, I, motion passes seven to zero. All right, next up is the HRDD signage.
Yeah, so.
Mike, you want to take that?
Yeah, I'll take this one. Uh, so on April seventh, the town board adopted a resolution, um, which you have in your packet, uh, which referred this proposed zoning text amendment, uh, establishing sign regulations for the HRDD district, uh, which is the Hudson Heritage Project, basically, to the planning board for a recommendation. Uh, and the town board will be holding a public hearing on May fifth, twenty twenty-one. The uh, zoning text amendment was prepared by staff, um, along with our consultants, um, both Liz Axelson uh, from CPL and David Cooper, um, to uh, to look at, uh, you know, the signage that would be necessary for Hudson Heritage, uh, based on what we know from the uh, from the applicant. Uh, we looked at the design guidelines. We looked at the um, architectural renderings that we've uh, all viewed as part of some of the the buildings that are proposed on the site and tried to make sure that what um, what the sign regulations would allow would um, uh, you know, for the most part accommodate those uh, what 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 they seem to uh, want there. I mean, I think in general, you know, they they probably would like a few more signs or maybe slightly larger than what we've permitted in here. But uh, we felt that this was a good, um, in in comparison to some of our other districts, we felt like this was a very reasonable um, set of requirements. Uh, what's would be good about this is once this is adopted, of course, then um, the uh, you know, the applicants, uh, whether they be Sabre or some other tenants, uh, can make application to the zoning department. Uh, and there are, you know, uh, quantifiable measures by which the zoning department can make a decision for a sign permit. Or in the uh, if if necessary, uh, those applicants could go to the ZBA and uh, ask for relief if there was uh, a reason for that. So um, we're recommending that the board convey a positive recommendation to the town board uh, prior to the public hearing coming up on May fifth.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Yep. Could I, could I interrupt? Uh, this is Susan Burke from EFG Sabre. Um, am I allowed to speak?
You with the applicant or?
Yeah, that's Susan from Sabre.
Oh, yep.
Sabre. Um, I I just have one small request. Um, I, when I worked with Mike Wealthy a little bit on one of the items to um, not limit the size of the logo on uh, the buildings B, C, D, E, F, I, J, K, L, and N. Um, and he rewrote this, um, and thank you very much. But when he rewrote it, he changed the overall limit to twenty-five square feet. When in the original, um, what what was originally presented to me was thirty-five square feet. And the third, we really need that thirty-five square feet for the, for our national tenant. It's just, it's just not gonna work for anybody.
I believe uh.
Is that B, is that B one?
B one. I believe she's referring to B one. Yep.
Wall signs B one?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we we did.
But that overall size, really, we really need it to be thirty-five, not twenty-five.
We did um, discuss that after we got, you know, their um, suggestions back. Um, and uh, as as the group felt that the twenty-five was adequate. But that's obviously, well, ultimately, it's up to the town board. Um, you can decide if you want to make a recommendation for that or not.
Mike, did you also compare that to the other town centers?
Yes, uh, and and compared to the other town centers, the totals here are quite a bit larger significantly. So, yeah. So what's permissible here, for example, would not be permissible in Arlington or in in any of the other town centers.
Right, but you, but you have to remember that some of these national tenants have four sides to a building and a little tiny sign is gonna look ridiculous. That Burger King logo is, it's, it's just gonna be too tiny.
All right.
On a, it's a big building.
Right, well, we'll see what.
But you know, all, all, I went to all the national tenants that we have and none of them are gonna fit within that twenty-five square feet.
All right, well.
Boogie King is, has a proposed sign of forty-four square feet.
We'll see what uh.
You know, they have standards, they have standards.
Hold on, hold on. But Susan, we hear you. Let let the chairman speak so we can understand what 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 the board's position. what what the board's position is.
Yeah, we get, we'll go around the board and see what see what they're amenable to. And we don't want you to be in a position to get taken, you know, getting a lot of variances, but we want it to be what everybody agrees on. So we'll go around the board for comments and see what they think. Nicole?
Yeah, we can just ask that the town, you know, allow the 35. I mean, I don't see that that's a problem. I understand what she's saying, a lot of the bigger name companies are gonna want larger signs. And if we leave it at 25, we're gonna end up with a lot of variances that we don't want. So I see a problem of us just saying to the board, hey, B1, that should actually say 35 and not 25.
All right. Ben, what say you?
I agree with Nicole, especially if 35 was proposed and supposedly agreed to, but then changed, I think it should be back to 35.
Ben, that's not the case. Just for the record, I don't have a problem with with the the board recommending a change, but I just want for the record, to be clear, ultimately, staff, this was staff's document. We did ask for suggestions, they provided a suggestion, but we, this is what went to the town board from staff. So I just, it's nothing, there was no
No agreement.
Agreement that was backed out of or anything like that, so.
Okay. Yep, so this is a a request from the applicant to to make it bigger. All right. Rocco?
I can go along with the 35 square feet because I, as as Nicole said, that we don't want all of these guys to run through the variances.
All right, Bob?
Yeah, I agree also with go with 35. Makes sense.
Joan?
I have no objection to 35.
Ahmed?
I concur.
Okay, seems like we're all in pretty much agreement. I mean, I'm not crazy about lots of signs, but but in this case, it's a few square feet extra. We'll we'll do a recommendation with amending B1 to 35.
So I think, just for clarity then, I think B1, we're talking about the total, right? So it's the last sentence here that says the icon image or symbol may be separate or detached from the related wall sign, provided that the total area of the two shall not exceed 35.
35.
All right, so just that last sentence. Okay. Just need to vote on that recommendation back to the town board.
Yeah. So I move we convey a positive recommendation to the town board regarding the adoption of the proposed zoning text amendment for signs with the recommendation that they change the last sentence of B5 of B sub 1 to 35 square feet.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter, I mean, sorry, Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Okay, we have a few time extensions to finish up. Mayor's College.
Good night, guys.
Good night, David.
Take care, David. Thanks.
Thanks, David.
Time extension for Mayor's College Dyson Center. I move that the planning board grant two 90-day time extensions for the Mayor's College Dyson Center addition, moving the conditional approval expiration date from April 30, 2021 to October 27, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Chabad Lubavitch, time extension. I move that the planning board grant two 90-day time extensions of conditional site plan approval from April 15, 2021 forward to October 12, 2021 due to project delays during the COVID pandemic.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Capolino subdivision on Vassar Road, time extension. I move that the planning board grant one 90-day time extension for the Capolino Minor Subdivision Application, moving the expiration date from April 14, 2021 to July 13, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Last one, item equities, time extension. I move that the planning board grant a 90-day time extension of conditional minor subdivision approval from April 25, 2021 forward to July 24, 2021, and an 85-day time extension of conditional special use permit and site plan approval from April 30, 2021 forward to July 24, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Any other business before the board tonight?
I move that we terminate this evening's meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes seven to zero somehow. I thought we'd have some opposition.
Well done. This is much quicker than I expected.
Wow.
Good night.
Dirty?
Yeah, good night.
Yep.
Good night, everybody.
May to be before midnight. Take care, everyone.